And clean things up over there and we wanted to do the right thing and extend our license over to that property mainly for the use, I would say, of some retail sales and also, you know, auction day potentially for some parking, maybe some auction sales for the day of the auction. I think that's kind of it really.
There was some talk that you were going to put a building.
Potentially, but right now it's not in the near future, but I would think at some point to do something more than we're doing now with the property. I mean, we do have a bit of money invested there at this point between the acquisition and then the cleanup. The cleanup was a little bit more than we expected, but yeah, we'll do something at some point for sure, but it's not in the near future.
Any members of the board have any questions?
Yes, I do have a question. Is the soccer field still in use?
Yes, yep.
Because I spoke to a parent who has a kid in the league and said that it hasn't been in use for some time.
Not accurate. They've had use of that for the last two years and if anything, I think it's in better, you know, as good a condition as it's been in a long time.
Isn't there a sign with your name on it?
There is.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, there is.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody here wish to make any comments or questions about this?
I just want to say that we're neighbors of Mr. Spelman's business. He has cleaned up-
Could you identify yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know you, but-
Irene Alley from 1928 County Street, Dayton. Mr. Spelman has cleaned up the area. It's much better than it was from the previous owner. I mean, we are right next to it, like with the question of the soccer field. We see the kids out there playing soccer quite frequently, so we know that it's being used and he's been a very good neighbor and I have no issues at all.
Thank you.
Even on the days of the auction, we very rarely, you know, we will hear the auctioneers, but they will move off or whatever and, you know, we've had no issues.
Will Brogren.
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Anybody else? I'll entertain a motion. Oh, we're going to close the hearing, right?
Do the motion and then you close the hearing.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion then to approve the-
Class one dealer's license for trucking iron traders to include 1886 County Street-
Correct.
And to extend the license and business to the former Dadeo site.
I think the-
Is there a second?
I'll give a second.
Can I just say one thing, add one thing? I just want to make sure that we're clear that we can also can conduct auction business on that property for the day of the auction for, for parking, maybe some selling at times depending on the size of the auction. I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, my motion is that it becomes all inclusive into the existing site.
So the license, the current license that he's operating under would be extended to this additional parcel?
Right, right.
Makes sense.
So there'll be one license for the entire area.
Perfect.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks so much.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank the Alley's. I was given obviously not accurate information about the field, so I appreciate you clarifying.
No, we've seen the kids out there. It's funny because they look like little ants gone.
You'd like to come on the sandy water?
Yes, we'll, we'll have a game, Mr. Alley.
You play soccer?
No, absolutely not.
Absolutely. There's a nice little sign though.
Yes.
This is a nice little sign. And he's landscaped the area that's-
Well, right along. Announcements. Last day for early voting is, for the presidential primary is tomorrow. I believe it's 7:30 to 4:30. I believe those are the time.
Yeah.
There's going to be a Memorial Day parade. Planning open meeting is set for February 27, 2020 at 7:00 PM in the Old Town Hall upper level. We urge those that are interested in the Memorial Day parade to go and to let Donna, Urshi, our Veterans Agent, whether or not we should have a parade. We want to have the ceremony to question us whether we're going to have a parade. The Town of Dayton's food bank distribution will be held next on March 21, 2020, located in the Town Hall lower level, and I believe that's at 8:00 AM. And a townwide parking ban is still in effect until April 1. No person shall be allowed. Any vehicles to remain in the streets so as to obstruct snow removal. Police will take notice. Public input. Anybody wish to say anything? If not, we're going to go to the Town Administrator's report.
Good evening. I only have one item on my report and it is about a senior tax work-off program proposal. This has been bandied about in the past, even before my arrival here, as I understand it. So before you, I have a short write-up and proposal that this is basically the jumping off point. I do still need to work with some department heads to determine available jobs, what their thoughts are with the appropriate job descriptions, eligibility requirements, applications, things like that. But we also need to bring this to town meeting for acceptance by the residents. So if you are in agreement to proceed and go forward, anybody at home who's interested in the proposal, I can certainly send that out to you. I have no qualms about that.
So you and I have had this conversation for over a year now. I'm glad that we're getting to this point here. Other towns have done this. In your statement that you have here, you indicate that it would be for seniors who are eligible for this program, they'll be eligible to have their taxes reduced up to $1,000 by volunteering to do some work for the town. And it says that they can do 125 volunteer service hours, but that doesn't work out with the math.
No, it's or. So there's a, chapter 59, section 5K had an addition to it in 2010. So originally it was $1,000 per household, excuse me, per person, I believe. Some towns do limit per household, but you could do either $1,000 or 125 volunteer service hours. And I put that in there specifically because we're a minimum wage community. We have adopted minimum wage and so that doesn't work out perfectly to $1,000, so.
So someone could have their taxes reduced up to $1,000 without doing the volunteer work? Is that what you're saying or?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
So how do we get-
Nope, you have to work. You have to come in.
So how do we get the 125, so how do we get the 125 hours then?
It's the limit.
Yes. You wouldn't be eligible.
Here, $1,000 for you.
So how is it-
You choose. So we, what we have to do right now is develop the program. So that's what we, we weren't, we're not going to develop it here at this table. I need to know if you're behind it, if you support it. Then we go to town meetings, see if the residents support it. In that timeframe, we develop the actual proposal, the eligibility requirements, the job types, you know, the job descriptions. Who's going to manage the program? I mean, I have some ideas in here, but I think the selected department head should weigh in.
No, I, I agree with that, but it just doesn't work out to 125 hours for 1,000. You know, if it's minimum wage, which is 1275-
Exactly, that's why-
It works about 78 hours that a person would have to work to come up to $1,000 at the minimum wage that we presently have.
Right, so you can choose the limit. It's either $1,000 or 125 volunteer service hours.
Yeah, it's neither or.
It's not together, it's or.
You can't do both, yeah. I do have a question though, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I, so I definitely support this. I mean, I do want to hear what, you know, residents at a town meeting have to say, but I definitely support this. However, does anyone have any information on how it works in terms of, so some eligible seniors will have a tax, I don't know, discount, right? We'll say their bill is discounted. Does that, that burden shifts on to the remaining taxpayers?
Yes.
And I'm not saying that as a negative, but I'm trying to understand because I have not actually heard of this program before this, so.
This is why the assessors are involved in the conversation. The town gets together and establish an, an upper limit of the program in totality. It's not just $1,000 unlimited per household of everybody that wants to do it. You say, I'm making this up, this isn't real, but if we just said, okay, $10,000 is our limit and we'll have 10 tax work-off people, that's not real. That wouldn't work out very well. But that's the amount we are willing to kind of shift the burden on.
Yeah.
We also, you, we don't go upright up to our levy limit. Main times are okay right now, so we don't. So we can kind of be okay with our budget and setting the tax rate and absorb this.
Every year we've had free cash. So last, this past year, we had 1.3 million. So this, if we limit it to 100 residents, for example, it's $100,000, that's $100,000 less that we're going to get in free cash. So it really doesn't impact the taxes that much as I see it anyway.
No, well, it would.
I understand that. They're going to have to, they're going to have to collect the monies, but the town isn't losing any money by assisting, by helping seniors.
And I would say the town's gaining work. Someone is going to work for the town. I mean, it's not, again, you don't just sign up and get $1,000. You got to come in.
Yeah, it's just, I meant you shift the, who, who has to, the folks who have to make up for the revenue that goes to the discount. So that's all I meant. I, like I said, really good idea, but I do have just a logistical question. So if you set a limit and then you end up having more folks interested who are eligible, but you have that limit, are we going to tell folks no?
You have a waitlist. I can speak from experience. We did have this program in West Bridgewater. It was managed by the Council on Aging. She had available jobs and then tried to match people up based upon their skill level to whatever job was available. So a shine counselor is a great example because you need to go through some training to be a shine counselor. You can't just move people into it. You have to have some credentials. So you take that into account. You have a waitlist and then you want to share the wealth, so to speak. So you have to move jobs around. However, 125 volunteer service hours, that's not a lot. My thought was a transfer station attendant because it's eight hours a week and you could have one person on one day and another person on another day. And you've got two people filling what would be one job. So there's a lot to kind of mold around here. Again, I really would like department heads to weigh in on specific jobs that they're thinking about, but I mean, I just made this up.
Are we the department heads weighing in on this?
I, I asked one because he happened to be in the hallway, but-
We've discussed that we possibly could bring this up at our next department head meeting.
Right.
To ask people-
Which is next week, yeah.
Which is next week, to find out if people are interested, if they have available positions for it. But I'm, as you know, I'm, I've been 100% behind this and I think we have to limit it to the amount of people because we can't have a lot of people not paying taxes.
See everybody.
But we want to be able to help seniors who are on fixed incomes that don't have that ability every time we have a tax increase to-
And I just want to stress the point that management of the program is key because you don't want just the same group of people cycling through all the time. You do want to share the opportunity with everybody. Or who knows, maybe no one will be interested. I don't think that's the case, but if you're not interested and you just do get the same group.
So was it you who revived this idea?
I've been in conversation with the Town Administrator for a little over a year now regarding this. I've given us some information on this. Other towns have done this and I just think it's a great opportunity for some of the residents in town to benefit from this.
I think it's a really good idea and what makes me feel even more uncomfortable, and I did not know this, was that Town Administrator, Aaronstein, worked in a town that did do this. So I think she has some expertise that she can rely on in terms of how to administer the program and get it up and running, which I think is good.
I'll recognize Mr. Piers-
I was just going to say that.
Because Mr. Piers talked about this-
Ten years ago.
At least.
We're finally getting around to it, Mr. Piers. Better late than never.
2007.
We did at the time when I get this rolling and we had some resistance from a lot of the department heads at the time, but I take a different perspective on the dollar amount because I look at it as a cost savings. Whereas if these volunteers, if you will, are out in the workforce in the summertime or whatever, recovering a vacation, nobody says you have to work 78 hours straight or whatever. There's cost savings on overtime, additional hours, or whatever it may be, you know, and-
Right, we've got union contracts that we're going to deal with, obviously.
Yeah, as long as it's not in conflict with the union contract, you know, you could put these people in the workforce.
Definitely a use for it, I think.
And to answer, so that went to Brad's question too, if you have a lot of people in many communities doing all lottery.
Okay.
So.
They don't, do you know of any communities, anyone who is familiar with the program? Because like I said, I really wasn't before this. Do some communities base it on income and like situation, like hardship as well?
Yes.
So not lottery, more like we select.
Well, you have eligibility requirements. So I want to say one thing too. This isn't all about the money. This is a great program. This is great for people to be able to have access to. So it's not all about the money. Secondly, I have a, this is my old folder for it. It's not very big yet, but I have a survey from various towns across the Commonwealth and they all do it differently. Most of them do have eligibility requirements, but they write, they range the gamut. So you can be income-based, you can be, you, you know, forced that it's retired and not somebody that already has a part-time job. I actually favor that because it's helpful that it's not somebody part-time already working for the town. But again, I'm not making these decisions all by myself. I would like this to be a team collaborative effort and I think that we have that. And I, I know that people would benefit from this. People, departments, the town as a whole, it's a good positive program, but I can share this with you. And it really does just range the gamut. Limits to households, limits to per person.
Sure.
All sorts of criteria.
The one, I guess I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but the one sort of-
I get the gavel.
That's what I do better than anybody. But the one, I think, benefit to maybe a lottery is that you're cycling who gets the discount so that it's not, I guess we could run into issues of like why, and I guess if you do it on income then it makes sense.
Like a cable operator comes to mind. Do you want to train the person to be able to do this? So maybe we can open up meetings on different nights and live broadcast every night of the week. I don't know if there's a viewership for that, but hey, who knows?
Sounds like a TV show.
So you don't want to invest so much in training multiple people over and over again. However, you really can design it however you like.
I personally feel it should be based, well, on age also, but on income. Because, you know, I shouldn't be able, able to be eligible for this, quite frankly, but those that-
Based on income.
Based on income, but not, anything else too. But those that are in need are going to be, the ones that are going to be seeking something like this and we should really cater to those that this would benefit financially for them and that their taxes would be reduced, so.
Does the state have any requirements?
Say that again?
Does the state have any requirements?
Um, most of them are in that law, chapter 59, section 5K. You have to be sixty, age sixty, over 60. And then, you know, the $1,000 limit or the 125 hour cap and you cannot be paid more than minimum wage.
I think that's called the 15 number or something.
I, I don't think, I think it was 750 before and went up to 1,000.
And it went up to 1,000. I believe, I mean, I was looking at the most recent.
We can, we can check that out though.
Other than union contracts, if any non-union employees, if we have a position filled by a non-union employee and we have a person eligible under the work-off program, would the employee get laid off? So the volunteer could-
No, this wouldn't be to replace current labor.
Would they be like substitutes or something like that?
Right, or somebody, so right now, our transfer station attendant full-time has left. So we only have the assistant and he's operating at full steam. Well, I mean, the guy deserves a day off every once in a while, right? So you would have a fill-in. Or if we had odd jobs over at the highway department to paint snowplows, which I know that we've had done in the past. That's a small job that would kind of not take precedent over catch basin cleaning, line striping, or all the other myriad of jobs that the highway department does. So you have that going and you don't get behind on the laborious, tedious stuff and, you know, you get somebody to-
It could be the animal shelter, it could be other things that we could use people.
Library page, Council on Aging, various positions in the Council on Aging, a shine coordinator I mentioned just because we only have the one, cable operators, transfer station attendant. I mean, I just, I kind of-
So no union or non-union employee would be affected, but if they were to take a vacation or something of, we would have someone to fill in?
A tax work-off could fill in, right. So Planning Board is a great example of this. Planning Board has a part-time staff person. Again, she's entitled to take time off. You have somebody filled in. There's continuity of services and, you know, if a developer comes in and they have a question, they can at least leave a message and speak with somebody and not have to see a closed door. So there's a lot of variables here. And then you will get the people that don't reach their full hours just because, you know, situational things, so.
Do they, okay, so that raises a different question. So now I have two questions. So will the hour, do the hours get tracked, like with a regular employee through the accounting office?
They actually get tracked. I wouldn't put on accounting.
I shouldn't say tracked, like documented.
Yes, so they're required and you, so you record the hours of service, send that to the, whoever managing the program, sends that to the assessor, then the assessor then takes that log of hours and sends it with the tax bill at the same time. You're required to do that.
My apologies.
Sorry.
If you, no, I apologize. If, so if you work less than what was allotted to get you to whatever the max is, does it, it pro-rate your decreases?
That's the amount. So if I only worked $500, that's the amount that comes off my tax bill.
Okay, I understand.
And then there's the documentation that says you only got, you know, $500 worth of hours in and that's what you're entitled to.
Okay. Well, I think it sounds good. That's my personal opinion.
And my understanding is that we have to agree to it, but it could be two members of the household could do 50 hours each or whatever to bring down that tax because they're both, they're both on a mortgage, they both have to pay that, those taxes, so they can split the hours. There won't be two people in the same household each getting $1,000 off of it. As I see it.
Well, this is why we set up eligibility requirements and rules and applications and things like that. So none of that has been figured out yet. This is really the first step. Do you like this idea? If you do, okay, let's go and we'll work it out.
The income base, of course, the income level would go up if it's a-
If it's a married, two people.
Right, right.
Instead of being 20 grand, it'd be like 40,000.
Yep.
To-
And why wasn't, I apologize, I should have asked this earlier. Why wasn't this ever implemented? Or was it implemented back when you were a selectman?
It was just discussed.
Yeah. Was it rejected at a town meeting?
Oh, no.
No, we didn't get that far.
Didn't get that far. It was a good proposal back then.
Well, I'm excited about this. Thank you to you both.
I ask that you continue pursuing it. I think it's a great, great plan.
Do you want us to vote on this, Town Administrator?
Well, that's good enough for me if you're all in agreement and we'll bring it up at department head meeting. And I, I do want to recognize Mr. Piers because he and I talked about this a couple of times too and he gave me some backstory and history on it, so.
We're standing on the shoulders of giants tonight.
I'm happy that it's here.
If the program is-
Stay here warm enough.
It comes full circle, right?
If the program is implemented, will the department head have an opportunity to say whether or not they will accept people in their department?
Yes, and I would say that goes before the program's implemented because you want to verify that there's interest, need, jobs available and, you know, what those jobs would be so that residents know what they're applying for. I mean, I anticipate answering some of these questions at town meetings, so I want to be ready and I want to have those answers.
Okay.
So.
Very good.
Good work, everyone.
All business. Third reading and vote to adopt the committee's appointment policy. So this is our third and final reading on that. And anybody have any questions on that?
Did we double check? This is just a general question. We double checked to make, to make sure we didn't leave any position that's appointed out of the list, right? Because I tried to go through, I felt like I had seen something that was omitted and then I couldn't remember what it was.
Did you catch last week's rerun?
Yes.
I think the only thing-
I love that you call it a rerun.
I think the only thing, there were a couple of things that we said we weren't going to act on because you weren't here. I think the only thing that came up was the Graves officer. Is that?
No, that was the organizational check.
That's the chart.
I, what we did was we made the edits that were discussed last time. I don't believe there was any, oh, I can look. I'm sorry, I have it over here.
Yeah, there were duplications of some of the-
Yeah, there were some duplications.
Positions and we corrected that.
Yeah.
I have no notes about this policy from last meeting.
I'll entertain a motion then to approve this policy.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Good work. Another one on the board.
I'm going to turn the next agenda item over to our clerk. I'm recusing myself from this conversation and discussion.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me the burden. Okay. This is from Dayton Historical Society dated February 10, 2020. To the Board of Selectmen, good morning. On behalf of the Dayton Historical Society, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, I'd like to request a waiver of fees for our two psychic and craft fairs, one dated March 28, 2020, and one dated October 24, 2020, which will be held on the second floor of the Old Town Hall. Thank you for your consideration of this request. Sincerely, Chris Pacico, President, Dayton Historical Society. If you're entertaining motions, Mr. Chairman, well-
No, you're the chairman. I'll make a motion.
For this one thing, yeah, you're right.
I will make a motion that we grant the request to waive rental fees for the two psychic fairs, March 28 and October 24, as requested.
I'm going to step down and second that motion. A discussion?
Why, why does it say insurance? The request doesn't-
I think that's actually a typo on the agenda.
Oh, all right, because the request doesn't include insurance. All right, so, all right.
Just so for folks watching, I, I believe this is something that we have traditionally done. I know it's a, it's a good event. I know a lot of people attend it and enjoy it, so I'm happy to support this tonight. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions?
I recuse myself.
The ayes have it, the motion passes. It's like riding a bike, Mr. Chairman.
The next agenda item is, we got this notice from Tony Vazario. It's Honorable Board of Selectmen, the Town Area Vietnam. Veterans respectfully request a waiver of the insurance requirements for the upcoming cruise night events due to the group's being a nonprofit entity. If any further information is needed, please do not hesitate to contact me. And I see that Mr. Vazario is here. Do you want to make any comment on this or the board have any questions for him?
Yeah, um, you say we can waive the insurance because it's a little bit of a burden. I mean, so that money goes, that we raise goes to the scholarships and that really would help, you know, more kids out. It's only for four hours, once a month for June, July and August and it's all weather permitting. If it rains, then, you know, it just, I can see, you know, if I was doing it every weekend and it's just once a month, so. And that's that.
Any board members have any questions or comments about this?
No, I, I enjoy the event. I think one of my uncles actually shows one of his cars there. I randomly saw him the last time I was there, so it's a good event and I'll be there again. Thank you.
It's a well-run event. I haven't gone in the past year or so, but it's a well-run event. They sell food, there's no alcohol. It's very interesting, you know, the, the band that plays there.
Just veterans and hot dogs and it's 50s and 60s.
Can't get better music than that, I tell you.
Eighty percent?
The old people.
Hey, watch that stuff.
I like that music.
Eighty percent, almost 90% of the guys that come down with the economy, they're all veterans, Vietnam veterans.
Yep, my uncle.
They, I make sure I told them, you know, no spin wheels and stuff like that and they do. And you might get a run after when they're some time.
I've attended the events myself, but I can't support waiver of insurance because we haven't done it to other nonprofits. We agreed to waive fees and as a matter of fact, we've actually had a recent request from a town employee. We waived the fee, but not the insurance.
Also, if I can just add, if you're going to sell food, I'm not sure that you can have the food permit without the insurance. I might be wrong, but-
It doesn't say anything on, on the food permit or the shorts.
But they're cooking.
They, they have to basically sign an affidavit that says that they're going to take full responsibility.
They're taking it on their own. Okay, all right, I'm wrong then.
Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request to waive rental fee requirements for the Taunton Area Vietnam Veterans for June 27, 2020, July 25, 2020, and August 22, 2020.
Just for clarification, they're looking for a waiver of the insurance requirements, not the rental fees, yeah.
But the agenda is the whole thing.
Yeah, but do we, we don't charge, do we charge for using the back?
The only thing is with the, with last week, I just wanted to say, we, Selectmen Gulat's 100% correct. We did not agree to waive the insurance. However, this is like a benefit. This isn't a family party.
It's a nonprofit, it's not a town employee.
So I actually feel comfortable to waive the insurance because this is a little bit different than the last. I'm also willing here to commit to waiving the insurance for other nonprofits who are holding charitable events where the profit, where the funds would go to some sort of charitable cause. That's my opinion.
But without that insurance, if someone is injured or if there is some other accident or injury, you're putting the town as the person, the liability will fall to the town. Now, when we ask them to give us a, to have the insurance, what they do is they have their insurance and it just says Town of Dayton also insured. If the limit of their insurance is exceeded by the, I'll call them injuries or damages, the town is still on the hook. But if they don't have any insurance at all, the town is on the hook from day one. And, you know, you have one slip and fall, you could be talking something awful. Um, we gotta treat, I know we said we would um, waive the fees on nonprofits, um, rental fees, if in fact we charge them. But I'm really concerned about the insurance because of liability.
I wonder with the
The taxes, uh, the taxes, I mean, all the cars are registered, you know, state and Massachusetts, they all have insurance. The cars out there in the parking lot right now, if they hit a wall
Okay, but that's not what we're talking about.
Right, right. But now if somebody slips and falls, I mean, if you could go outside, outside of, you know, the, the hall right now and you slip and fall, who's gonna be responsible?
Town of Dyton.
That is, that is a point people use to track all the time.
You gotta make nothing gain insurance for people that come and go. This is the part I understand.
No, no, we carry that insurance for that purpose.
Getting back to the motion, which has been seconded yet, is the motion to waive the rental fee? Apparently, there is a rental fee for the back and also the insurance.
I would like to amend my motion. I can't recall if select, if it had been seconded.
It wasn't seconded.
Okay, I'm gonna amend it to also include uh, to waive the insurance as requested.
I'm gonna step down and second that motion. Any further discussion on this?
Why would we waive the insurance for this one organization when we don't do it for others?
I said, I said, if it's a charitable event, I'm willing to, I'm not speaking for you, Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to uh, treat them all equally with this, if it's a charitable event and it's a nonprofit.
We, we last week, uh, not last week, the prior meeting to last week, waived the rental fee for a town employee, which is not a nonprofit. It was for a town employee, which I, as you know, I oppose. This is for a nonprofit group that raises money for Vietnam vets. Having, and I'm sure you experienced it too, I think you had family members, but uh, I have a, a family member that served in Vietnam also. So I take this very seriously. It, it's for a good cause and I'm in favor of waiving uh, the insurance fees as well as the rental fees, so uh, there's no further discussion?
Are we gonna have a policy then?
We wanna take each individual case.
No, that
I, can I remark on that? I think, so the, the risk is transferring to the town. Selectman Gulart's a hundred percent correct, and I can understand that it's a good cause. That being said, why would the Town of Dyton take on that risk? We are just a venue at this point. He, the, the organization is an exhibition. It is bringing people here with vehicles and they're serving food. I think it's valid to require insurance.
But we serve food at the lights on thing.
I need insurance. I mean, I just
The towns is all I'm saying. So how is that any different?
Well, they're serving uh, hot dogs only. That's pre-cooked, right? I don't know, Todd Pilling told me that there's, no, there's a, there's a distinction. I know, I know how it sounds, but he really had this conversation with me. Anyway, I'm just, just gonna say, I don't know if the town should be taking on the risk, but that's it.
Ask the appropriate questions. What I want to say is, whether it's in a policy, not within the policy, I'm saying publicly that I'm going to operate in this framework going forward when a nonprofit approaches the board regarding a charitable event and a waiver of insurance. That's all I'm saying.
So I, I do have a question. Does this organization have any insurance at all?
No.
No. Cuz I know that the Dyton Historic Society, uh, we have the insurance and it doesn't cost that much for us to get that insurance. But we already, already have insurance as the society, but if you don't have insurance, it's gonna cost a lot more.
What have you done in the past?
We've, we've, we've just Insurance, but since the new policy says that, you know, we could waive it, you know, so that's why we
The new policy doesn't say insurance. It says, it says waiver of fees.
No waiver of insurance.
Insurance is in there. I believe we had a whole conversation about it, cuz I remember cautioning against it, but we wanted to leave it open. So, we didn't have this policy last time.
No, no.
It didn't exist. And so, Mr. Rosario did go out and get one day insurance on for those events.
What was the cost of that, if you don't mind me asking?
Uh, what was, was for the three events?
Three events?
Two hundred and seventy nine dollars or something like that.
How much is a typical scholarship, Mr. Rosario? How much is a typical scholarship?
Uh, we gave, uh, we gave a thousand dollars to three uh, kids. As a matter of fact, two years ago, it was a kid from Dyton. But we do all surrounding towns because it's, it is Taunton area, you know, Vietnam vets, which covers all the surrounding towns. But, you know, uh, it isn't that, something that we do every uh, every weekend or it, it, it's, my thing is just, it's for four hours once a month. And that's it. You know, and all, and all, they make money is just hamburgers and hot dogs. That's all they sell. And uh, hey, just trying, it is, you know, it is what it is. But insurance, like I said, all the cars, they're registered, they all got insured. It's like all the cars outside right now, they all insured. Uh, you know, it's just
What the requirement is really is just liability insurance. That's what the requirement is. When we say uh, you get the certificate and you list the Town of Dyton as an also insured, it's liability insurance. That's what, that's what would be uh, the town would be responsible for if there was no insurance. I'm concerned also, if we're gonna do it on an individual basis, what happens when we say no to somebody? Yet we're setting itself up or setting the town up for a discrimination charge.
We, we did that a couple of weeks ago when we, we waived the fee. I didn't support it, but waived the fee for a town Rental fee for a town employee, so the, every other town employee should come before the board and ask that to be
Well, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to rental fees. I, I already said
I am a, well
But the insurance is, my concern is we're, we're in effect, a rental fee means you don't have to pay whatever it is, some dollars. When you waive the insurance, you're setting the town up for a liability. Waiving a rental fee does not set the town up for a liability. Waiving an insurance fee does. That's my concern.
This is where I'm still confused. You're saying waiving the liability. Again, if somebody walks in here and falls, are they supposed to have insurance?
But they're here to come in to whatever we
Conduct business.
You know, paying a tax bill or whatever.
What about all the kids that are playing in the playground?
The towns require to have liability insurance.
So the town already has liability insurance?
This event is an event that's coming in from the outside and using town property. That's the difference.
Mr. Agia?
I, I made an agreement. I think insurance is important. Um, my partner and I will make a donation to the town Vietnam vets to pay the insurance.
Problem solved. Mr. Rosario, is that amicable for you, sir? That's good for you? Do you're okay with that?
You're kidding me. I had, we just
So, do you wanna make a new motion?
You wanna withdraw?
Yeah, I'm gonna amend the amendment now. I'm, actually, I'm gonna withdraw completely.
Withdraw the second.
I'll withdraw the second.
Yeah, withdraw my motion.
And we have an agreement, uh, that Mr. Agia, Agia on his part will pay your insurance fees, so
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We need confirmation of that, obviously, before the first day of the event, so it's very appreciated, Mr. Agia.
Oh, thank you.
So, so
We're just gonna do the fee, uh, the rental fee.
Rental fee.
But we don't charge them a rental fee.
I don't think we charge, I don't think we charge how bad, no.
I think the motion should be, we approve
To have the vets.
Three dates that were requested and we require the uh, insurance.
Yep.
All right, because Mr. Agia has already stepped up.
You wanna second that motion?
Is that a motion?
That was a motion.
Yes, the mo, the three dates would be June twenty seven, July twenty fifth, August twenty second. Uh, we approve the dates. We do not waive the insurance requirement.
I wanna make a friendly amendment. Uh, my friendly amendment will be with thanks and appreciation uh, to Mr. Agia
Absolutely.
And his partner.
Appreciate that.
We've had a lot of class tonight.
Oh, yeah.
Second, absolutely.
You made the motion, second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I mean, hope you guys, uh, see you guys
We'll be there.
While the permitted.
Can procure me a hot dog.
My jitterbug days are over. Uh, next uh, item is discuss the request for a one-day entertainment license from seventeen twelve. Are you gonna uh, discuss this then? Do you wanna come to the microphone? We're gonna put you right on the spot here.
Hello, hello. How are you?
Hello, good.
So could you let us know uh, exactly what you're looking for?
We are just looking for a one-day entertainment license. We have a local band that is interested in playing. Um, if it goes well, we will then pursue a full entertainment license and we go through the proper paperwork for that. Um, we would like to have them play on March fourteenth, which is a Saturday. Uh, the name of the band is The Tumbling Dice, so I know it's a lot of local guys from the area, so.
Why do I know that band?
I know there's a couple of Madeiras's maybe that play.
That's it. Neil Madeiras?
Yep, yes, yes.
Nailed it.
So, talking about a conflict now, he's a cousin.
No, I, no relation at all.
No, he's a cousin of
Oh, oh, of you. I'm sorry. I thought you were look, you were looking at me. I was like, no, no, he's definitely not related to me.
So I'm not sure if I can uh, even participate in this discussion at all.
I think we should
Town Administrator.
Uh, I mean, you have no financial gain from him.
Cousin is a far enough distance.
Yeah, and, and he's not
It's my wife's, it's my wife's cousin, but
So that's even further out.
Okay.
I mean, as long as you have stated it, you're not receiving any financial gain for him.
And if anybody has any concern about me uh, being part of this discussion, you can say it now. I'll hold your peace. Uh, so I have a couple of questions. Uh, how many people can you fit in the restaurant there, so?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. And will any of this be outside?
No.
I've gone to, this sounds like a St. Patty's Day thing, so I've gone to some of those at, at different bars and they have entertainment outside and everything else.
Sure, sure. Nope, this will all be confined.
Sounds like a European
Will there be room to dance?
Patty's Day party.
Well, just listen to the music.
There's not a lot of room there, but um, maybe a little bit, but there's not much in the room where we wanna have them play.
Which room will they be playing in the back room?
They'll be playing in, in the, what we call the back room where the pool room is. We'd like to see if we could maybe move that pool table. We're not sure that's pretty good, so.
And will there be a, a police detail there for this?
I don't think so. Would it be required?
That's something we can
That's a question to the police chief. Okay. You can, if you vote favorably, you could stipulate it based upon his approval, like if
Like final
If he required a police detail.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm, I'm interested just to hear maybe from
Yes, that's one more.
Oh, what would be the, the time period?
Seven to ten thirty.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Anybody uh, from the audience that wishes to uh, make a comment, uh, regarding this?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Mr. Rosario will be there. He's got one person.
Because the town does really, she's doing a super job here today and, and you know, the town needs to keep the people in town, you know, to go out and, you know, entertain and, yeah. I'm psyched, I'm looking forward to it. Well, it's not crazy, which I know Lisa's not gonna be crazy, it's the way it is. It's gonna be good.
Yeah, they, we've given them permission to have a pool table and a jukebox there, and I don't believe there's been any complaints about the jukebox uh, uh, playing too loud or anything like that, so. Is there anybody else that wishes to uh?
I'm here now in nineteen twenty-eight Cali Street. Just had a couple of questions. Cuz we had come before when they had applied for an entertainment jukebox license, and we live a short distance from, you know, the facilities. We're just concerned, my husband and I, of the noise level, the traffic level. Um, you know, we wanted to just find out the times of operation. And now you're saying that if it works out fine, you wanted to apply for an entertainment in the future. We're just concerned with traffic, with noise, and how late that this would be ongoing.
I should have probably uh, read the letter that uh, was, or the email that was sent to the town, so uh, this is from uh, Lisa Atwood. We are requesting a one-day entertainment license for the seventeen twelve restaurant and tavern on Saturday, March fourteenth. This is a local band that happens to be free on said date. We'd like to play from seven to ten thirty P M. If this goes well, we will pursue another entertainment license for life. Entertainment, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. And that, if they ask for an entertainment license period for similar situations like this, we would have a public hearing, all the butters would be notified, obviously. This is almost the way I look at it anyways. Give us an example of how the, how it's gonna work. I mean, if, if there's a problem with traffic, that's, that's clearly something that the town would be concerned about. If there's a problem with noise, if there's a problem with people drinking too much, that's all issues that we uh, would be able to test with this.
Here we go. They had bands over there. And when they started playing music, the volume was low, but as everybody kept drinking, the volume went up. All right, just sit in my house and the windows closed and listen to a band, that's going a little too far. So I would really like if you understand, you know, I got nothing against you having a band. You're doing a great job right now, really. If they keep the volume down in the four walls, I've got no complaints. But if it goes across my garden, the vegetable garden, and the whole, my windows, I got a problem.
Understandable.
But I think you understand where we're coming from.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I think you're done, really. Place is looking great, screw stuff.
And if I can just add one thing. This is certainly not, if we did have the opportunity to pursue the license, this would not be something we would have every week. This, it's not that kind of place. It's not that kind of restaurant. It would be a once in a while, but we just wanted to see how it would work out for this one time. That's we were, why we were asking for the one license, so.
Is the seating capacity that you mentioned, is that the total number of people that can be seated either in the dining room or at the bar?
No, in the dining room, I believe it's seventy-five or seventy-six.
And
And then the rest are at the bar.
And there's also tables, if I remember correctly, tables in the bar area?
Yes.
Besides the bar itself, but there's tables there for
So it's the total number of people that can be seated?
Total, total number of people that can be seated in that entire restaurant bar dining room.
Do you have adequate parking space for, for ninety-seven people?
I would hope that we reach that, but um, I'm roughly
I haven't seen a problem over there yet with parking, because we got the fire up next door and really nobody's there at the fire park at night. So I've seen some overflow and um, I haven't seen cars parked on the edge of road or, they've done a pretty good job of, of policing.
Given the ninety-seven, you're gonna have some couples come together, so that's one vehicle supposed to.
Yeah, so, you know.
I, I've been there a few times and I've never seen a problem with parking. Yeah, I'm just concerned that this might be a bigger group, but this would be a good test uh, for seventeen twelve to see how, you know, how
I think it'd be a good test for the owners to police their actions, you know, and I think they will. They've done so well.
Yeah, I also consider this to be more of like a trial run and when um, if seventeen twelve does intend to pursue a, a quote-unquote permanent entertainment license, that we will have some data back from events like this and, and that could guide, you know, further decision-making when that, when and if that time comes, so I think it's a good idea.
And we could set conditions as to how many times they can actually have bands. I mean
That's what I mean, yeah.
You've indicated there won't be every week, which makes sense, but there may be certain events that you wanna have bands, so we, we would limit that and we'll get some guidance from you as to how many you're looking for, I think, kinda thing.
And we would rely on feedback from uh, butters when these events, you know, when there are events as to everything went well, we have no issue, so.
There will be a public hearing if they do decide to go for an entertainment license, that all the butters would be notified, cuz they're gonna be impacted most by something like this.
I just have a comment. So um, ninety-seven occupancy does not trigger the uh, threshold for requiring a sprinkler system, uh, which is generally required for an entertainment license, but you'll be fine. I've already gone up against a B B R S before and lost, so um, it's fine. I would just request that a fire inspection be done with regards to the setup of the event. Um, or just work with the fire, maybe not inspection, maybe it's the wrong word, but work with the fire chief, just to make sure that you have adequate egress paths, um, things like that. Okay.
The other thing you might wanna be talking about egress, on a private events like this, I would make it mandatory that you, the owners, stress for the fire exits are
Correct.
This all came about from the nightclub in Morail, if you remember.
Anniversary
Unfortunately, when people go through a door, an emergency happens, they remember the door they came through, if they get about the fire exits in the back or where.
Okay.
So that means something that you should really do all the time, even when you have an event.
Absolutely.
You know?
Sure.
Point them out, well marked, and you find.
Any further discussion?
No, I'll be there. Thank you.
Carpool.
Autographs, Mr. Alley.
I'll entertain a motion then.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the one-day entertainment license for seventeen twelve restaurant and tavern for Saturday, March fourteenth, from seven to ten thirty P M, as indicated.
Second.
Did we want to add that the uh, fire chief or should we take a look at it?
And the police detail if necessary?
If, if necessary, yeah.
What about building?
It's, I can say that it's an automatic trigger when they have an entertainment license that fire chief and I will go in and inspect it, so.
So we don't need a problem with motion. Thank you.
But, but did you
Police detail though does need to be, because that's not automatic.
I thought that's actually what we were talking about. Um, I don't know how to phrase that though.
Uh, contingent upon the fire chief ruling, if a police detail is necess, uh, excuse me, police chief ruling that uh, police detail is necessary.
What, Madam Administrator?
Sorry.
Is there a second on that amendment to the, the motion?
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll bet you do.
Good luck.
You're welcome.
Discussion of budget priorities for state budget. We discussed this a little bit uh, last week and uh, not to say you were ill, so.
I have written
So you've, uh, Madam Administrator, you've uh, provided us with uh
This is the list that uh, we devised at our meeting last
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Alley.
Thank you. This is the meeting we, uh, excuse me, this is the list of projects we brainstormed at our meeting last week. I did send them over to Selectman Zograffus via email and he wrote back.
Thank you, by the way.
Absolutely. Uh, my recommendation is listed here that we request funding for a library schematic study for
Absolutely. My recommendation is listed here, that we request funding for a library schematic study for a new location, and make mention of our need for infrastructure improvements, specifically citing the Pleasant Street Bridge, Briggs Street Bridge, and Center Street Bridge as top priorities. I want to mention why I did not choose the economic study to be included. It was a tight race for me, but I'm working on an initiative with Bridgewater State University to go that route. And I don't expect it to be, you know, rising to the amount that we would need assistance. I think we could absorb that.
I would love to work with you on that, because that's my old alma mater, and I still know some folks over there.
So I restart the region.
So we are doing the Fuel Depot? I'm sorry, I didn't mean Centura.
Uh, I think I'm off track, and I apologize, but, uh, so the economic study is just going in a different vein. Uh, that's all I meant, but sure.
But we're doing one, two, three, four, and six?
These are your choices, and my recommendation is to choose the library schematic study and make mention of these bridge needs.
I, um, as you know, I emailed you about this. That was also my, my assessment, so I really didn't have a preference. I know some of the bridges may be in not as good condition as others, so maybe we could have assistance of like the highway superintendent to let us know which ones would take precedent if we were to get this funding. Um, but I really felt strongly about the library schematic study, especially if we're thinking about a new location, because that renders the old study sort of obsolete. And I would like to see us try to do something, or, or at least study the Fuel Depot. So I guess I'm saying Fuel Depot, some of the bridges, and the library schematic study.
Mrs. Gulat, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, that's the final list. I think, um, last week, when we talked about this, the Fuel Depot rose to the top because of our M V P and, um, you know, the need. I was thinking about this, I was thinking about these things today when I was reading this. And I agree, the Fuel Depot is listed as number one here. When you think about priorities in this town, and you think about what department would rise to the top, I think most people would say public safety. But in all honesty, the number one, I'll call it strategic department, in order for every department in this town to operate, is the street department. Simply because, in the good weather, obviously, we have good streets and everything's working fine. In the wintertime, they are really strategic, because they've got to keep the roads open so everybody else can move, public safety, fire, whatever. And the real problem would be that department being so strategic. If there's no Fuel Depot in town, and we got a blizzard going, and they're trying to keep the roads open, the Fuel Depot is, it, the Fuel Depot tied to the highway department primarily, and all the other departments that support the town. Without that Fuel Depot, we could be up the creek, and our M V P planning and our hazard mitigation planning would be on paper. And so, so I agree, uh, the Fuel Depot, um, and I'm not gonna put the bridges in any order. I agree that Mr. Ferry should determine, based on his experience and knowledge, what those should be, and certainly, I think we could go with a library study.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment on the Fuel Depot specifically?
Yep.
So I came around to this. Um, after speaking to the town administrator, we had a frank discussion, and I just let her know some of my concerns. And my two primary concerns, which I still have, but I do feel a lot better, I am gonna support the Fuel Depot, was, A, we are now a green community, and I do have some concern that having a Fuel Depot, uh, while we're trying to become not reliant on fossil fuels, sends maybe the wrong message. However, to your points, Select Nigular, I do think safety, um, and the safety of everyone really trumps that. But I still have the concern about, uh, right now, we have two gas stations in town, and I do want us to look at. Three, excuse me. Uh, that's why I'm mobile, correct. I think it's a Gulf now. I do want us to look at the, how this might affect those business sources. Like, right now, is the highway, are the highway department trucks using like Getmore, or I call it Getmore, I forget the name of it now. Getmore or Reese's? Like, where do they fuel?
Anywhere they need to. We, they have a card.
I just don't want us to negatively impact the local businesses if that's been a source of revenue, filling up those.
So of course it has, of course it has. However.
I think we should look at that, though.
The town's paying market rate for something that it could procure at a much cheaper, I mean, we don't pay taxes. That's why they're part there.
I understand, but I think we need to look before we leave, and I think that's a consideration that needs to be taken into account. I'm still gonna support it. I'm not saying, but that is something, a question I have got from people, is, well, how is this gonna impact Reese's gas, or how is this gonna impact Gulf, or Mobile, or, uh, Getmore down on County Street? So I just want, I wanna be us to have an answer to that. I know that's maybe, it, you know, it's not an easy conversation to have, but it's a consideration for me.
Right, and I'm not sure how much we're gonna save. I'm sure we have to get insurance for wherever we're gonna have this Fuel Depot. That's a big, that's a big safety thing.
The emphasis is safety, I guess. I know.
I also have my concerns, like you addressed, that we're trying to become green. I think in twenty years, this is gonna be, hopefully, this is gonna be obsolete, that we won't be using fossil fuel.
But what's the replacement for diesel? I, I have the feeling that for heavy equipment, we're still gonna be.
I'm hoping that, uh, science and engineers and everybody else can work on that.
I agree one day, but it may not be twenty years. I agree one day, though.
But the other thing is, to, to kind of piggyback on what you said, gasoline per se. I think with green vehicles and us being a green community, we're gonna see the expansion of electronic vehicles in the town. Maybe not in all the town departments, but certainly in the population.
Yep.
So the local fuel stations are going to be affected by that anyhow. We have no control over that.
Right, that's true. That's a good point.
Now, the actual Fuel Depot, if it is in twenty years obsolete, uh, because there's a replacement for diesel, or, or the, whatever. We're looking at covering the town for twenty years in an emergency. What happens now is, I think they, wherever you are when you need fuel, um, I think that's where you go. The problem that we were talking about specifically was, at night, when everything shuts down in town, you either have to go to Sunoco in Somerset, next to the fire department there, or Rehoboth, and in a real emergency, let's say a big blizzard or something, or a fuel shortage. The other thing is, if there is ever a fuel shortage, the town would be priority and would have its fuel. People in town may have to go, you know, like we did back in the oil embargo, that's probably before you were born, but anyhow. I think this, I think for, I'll use Mr. Pachico's reference, to twenty years. I think if we have a Fuel Depot for twenty years, that the benefit to the town, the protection to the residents, and the ability for, especially the street department, to do its job when the weather is at its absolute worst, I think it's that important, or it, I don't think we would have had it arise to the level it did on the, um, M V P thing, so that's what my thought is. And I, I agree. I hope someday, not anti-gasoline people, but I hope someday, you know, uh, there's another way, whether it's electricity or something else that no one's thought of.
But I want to be clear, and I think this is also something that helped me come around, is we would be getting money in the state budget to study and to like, or start to implement this, and that I think that's something that helps.
So this is not the final, right.
Yeah, that's something that helps me, uh, and quite frankly, yes, we are a green community, but we, I think, me personally, I still want to make decisions that, um, benefit the town. And yes, a Fuel Depot doesn't jive with my idea of what a green community is, but it's not always, you gotta put the town first, right? And I think in an emergency, like a Fuel Depot, we should, we should probably have that, so I think that is the most important consideration.
Yeah, and I had mentioned when we had this discussion last week, that because of our municipal vulnerability plan, it came up that we should have our, for our town vehicles, have our own source of, uh, of gasoline for, and, or diesel, and diesel, for those vehicles. So that's what convinced me that there's a need for it. I'm just letting everybody know that this is probably good for twenty years.
I agree.
Mrs. Gulat and I will still be here in twenty years. Not necessarily sitting here, but we'll be here to.
We'll be in a gas line somewhere.
We'll be in the gas line.
Yeah, we'll be in a gas line somewhere.
But, so I'm, I'm supporting this. I just, we, you have to ask questions, and.
We just.
I, I just. Right, and I just think the future's gonna be, we're gonna get away from fossil fuel as soon as we can, and.
And, 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 you know, some of our public safety departments are still on fuel, so we will get some mileage out of this, pun intended, so.
I like it.
Do we need to vote, vote on the three specific things?
I mean, it was back here for discussion, um, so that you could weigh in collectively together.
So, uh, is everyone okay? I wanna, I'll make a motion for the Fuel Depot, the library schematic study, and then should we just say bridges, and then you, we can, you can flush?
That's exactly what I have written. You're just bridges.
Is that, that okay with everyone?
That's, that's fine with me.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Good work, uh, on that, Madam Administrator. Just so the people in Dayton are aware, she has been working fiercely behind the scenes with our state delegation to coordinate this. This was something that, to the best of my knowledge, she was working on, um, and so this is something that will definitely benefit the town if it gets approved in the final budget, so hats off to you, Madam Administrator.
May I make a request that we skip down to, um, item eight H?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take agenda item eight H out of order.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
So this is, we received a letter from Superintendent of Highway Department, Tom Ferry. After reviewing applications on hand and interview process with our town administrator, I would like to recommend James Wilson Madeiras from Wheeler Street, Dayton. As operator one laborer, James has all the required licenses and is a good match for our crew with the various jobs we do for our town. At this point, we will be contingent of James passing a pre-drug alcohol and physical screening, and also a Cory background check, as we know, we had somebody resign from the highway department a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, and there was a promotion for that position, and then now there's a vacancy. So any discussion on this?
I'm prepared to make a motion, and we can discuss it if it's seconded. All right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint James Wilson Madeiras, uh, as a operator class one laborer for the Dayton Highway Department.
Second.
Second.
Oh, contingent upon the passing of the pre-drug alcohol and physical screening.
And Cory background.
And the Cory check, right.
Second.
Mr. Ferry, you have any questions or anything you wanna?
Hi, pleasure to meet you.
Oh, he's here, okay. Does the board have any questions before we vote on this? Mr. Wilson?
How long have you?
Madeiras? No, it's Wilson Madeiras.
How long have you lived in Dayton?
All my life.
Okay. What year did you graduate D R?
Two thousand and four.
I graduated two thousand and two. I don't remember now.
Why you went to school, my uncle Frankie Joyce?
Oh, my God, you're related to Maurice? Crazy, small world. That's fabulous, yeah, okay.
I, uh.
You moved back, or you never left?
I never left.
So you moved from Brook Street to Wheeler Street?
No, I just always moved on Wheeler Street.
Okay, fabulous.
I had the pleasure of interviewing Mr. Wilson Madeiras. I was very impressed. Uh, we had a nice conversation, um, and, no, Tom, you don't have to sit down. I was gonna yield the floor to you if you had any comments to share, but, uh, it was obviously positive, and we are jointly recommending his appointment. Um, and we tried out our hiring policy for the first time, and I believe it worked very well.
So it worked well. Did we have good feedback on that?
I don't know, Tom, do you have good feedback on that?
He looks happy. I see a smile.
Well, we have success, and it moved quite quickly, so, um, that's always good for me, yes.
Any further discussion on this?
No, that's fabulous.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye, welcome, welcome.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Welcome to our town. You have to come up here. We're gonna shake your hand.
I didn't realize Mr. Ferry was still here when he didn't.
I didn't either.
I can barely see him, too. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Welcome, congratulations. Tell Frankie I said hi. We went on foreign exchange together, all the way to France.
So he didn't leave, but you left the Dayton?
I did, but I came back. He was, he was, uh, wise. Just kidding.
So is there anything else we need to go out of order? Uh, Town Administrator?
I think we should take, please, the Board of Health, and then they, uh, anything with the Board of Health, if that's okay. Select Nigular, are you okay with that?
I would say your next thing would be J.
Sorry, B.
And then the budgets for them.
No, we, this is up, we're going to change it. We're gonna go to item M, and I believe we.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we take agenda I M, excuse me, eight M. I M, yeah, eight M, out of order to discuss Departments five-ten, five-nineteen.
A second.
Should we also include in that, uh, two-ninety-two? Is that under the control of the Board of Health?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, and Department two-ninety-two.
Did we get that?
A slightly discussion based upon the organizational chart.
Did Agricultural Commission approve a budget that we, that is here tonight, too? Can we do that one as well? They just approved a budget last night.
Yeah, so it's Departments two-nine-two, five-ten, five-nineteen.
And the Agricultural Committee? Okay.
Commission, yep.
Yep.
And add that one to it?
Yes, please. And you second that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. We'll do two-ninety-two for us. This is the Animal Control Officer. So do you want to address this? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Tanis.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming, gentlemen. And Animal Control Officer Ferry.
Mr. Bernardo was gonna be here, but he had, uh, some family issues he had to take care of, so.
Why don't we just hold off?
Otherwise, we would have all been here.
Sure, we'll hold off a second while Mrs. Gulat gets her, uh, budget booked.
How is my face? Is it bright red? I am dying.
I thought it was just me. I thought I was just fired up tonight.
Well, I kept looking at Karen. I kept looking at Karen, like, she doesn't seem like she has a problem.
So, uh, we're gonna do the Animal Control for us. Thank you.
Happened.
So, John, I can go through just the, uh, the things that, that have increased, um, in, in our reasoning for, for the increase, if that's acceptable?
Yes.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Yep.
So, um, we have under, let's see, I forgot where we are here. So we, we've requested, um, for salary for an assistant A C O to twenty-one hundred dollars. It's been previously five hundred dollars. I think for, for many years, we've attempted to get an assistant A C O, um, primarily as a backup in the event that, um, our, our current, you know, permanent A C O is either away on vacation or out of town, or, or unable to respond for, for any other reason. And we, we have not really been able to get anybody for five hundred dollars. So we, we've requested to, to increase it to, to twenty-one hundred in hopes that it might entice someone, even if it's for, during vacations for a couple of weeks a year, um, or in the event that there's, there's an emergency and Stacy can't make it out, so.
I'm sorry, oh, you can tell I have a question. Thank you. Sorry, I, uh, that's okay.
I note that there's a note that's saying that you're in favor of keeping it five hundred. Is that correct? Is that?
Well, I have talked to different communities. A lot of people do on calls for their, but Swansea and Somerset, they do, they have weekend people at fifty dollars a day, flat rate, whether they go out or not. I would, I'm okay with having somebody cover me just for emergencies, but I know we've also talked to Rob Johnson. I have, but he's A C O in Rehoboth, that he's willing to come over and take my vacations, like I would take his vacations, but he has assistant, but that would be, um, sort of like a mutual aid kind of thing. So there was a lot of things we had discussed.
May I ask a question about, um, this is for Mr. Tanis?
Sure.
What is the, what is the pay structure under the twenty-one hundred? That that would be a stipend paid out monthly, or how does that work? Is it per inspection? Like, we have got the inspectors under the building commissioner, and they're paid per inspection. Would it be paid per, like, per D M? I, I don't know.
I think it would probably wind up being a, a per D M, like a certain amount per day.
We had discussed, when, when we had discussed it with Mr. Pies and Mr. Phil, it was, I usually take three, uh, three weeks out of the year. Usually February and go this year, but February, April, and October. So for those three weeks, have somebody cover me for those three weeks. They were thinking seven hundred dollars a week. I don't get paid seven hundred dollars a week just as an F Y I, but that's okay.
So you're involved on the assistant.
We're gonna be assistants.
I'll be the assistant.
Right, exactly.
But, um, I think.
There you go.
Well, there's, there's also other, you know, depending on what's in the kennel and that kind of stuff, hopefully I'll, chairs that will be able to do that, so I wouldn't have to have somebody cover the kennel. It would just be for emergencies and emergencies only. Emergencies. It would just be for emergencies and emergencies only. Emergencies, like what I dealt with tonight, had died by a car, that's an emergency. So those kinds of things, not, well, there's a dead cat on the side of the road, that's not an emergency, even though people don't like looking at it, it's not an emergency. I don't call another town to come in to pick up the dead cat. But something like getting hit by a car or a hoarding house, you know, those kinds of things are emergencies.
Something that requires an immediate.
Right, right.
So I agree that five hundred dollars is too little, but I'm wondering, if seven hundred dollars a week and it's more than what you're getting paid with it, that's also the other extreme, so. I'd like to hear from Mr. Pius.
Yeah, we first had a discussion with this. We talked about the salaries in there indeed, but at least three weeks vacation coverage, and we as a board, and she was included with us, Stacy was included with us, came up with seven hundred. Could be a little excessive. Things have changed since we've developed, since this was developed. To Rehoboth, A C O came forward and said he'd be willing to serve Tom Dayton. And I guess Stacy's been working on arrangements for mutual aid and emergency coverage, which is great. Maybe we won't need the twenty-one hundred. But I think a week of coverage twenty-four seven is worth probably about five hundred a week.
That's actually what I was thinking of, that maybe reduces to fifteen hundred versus the twenty-one hundred.
Yeah, now that we have the shelter and that, you know, prior to having the shelter, it was just a call-out. Go take care of it, and you're done, that's it. You know, if there's animals at the shelter now, it's gonna be a daily thing, and this is, you know, an issue going forward, even for a regular A C O. Additional amount of time, things like that. Also, should the town decide to go with some mutual aid agreement with, say, Rehoboth, there may be, Rehoboth or another town may look for some type of financial compensation on the other end, just as a.
That's what I was gonna ask, would it be a swap-off?
It would be a swap-off, but there are towns that will, I mean, we had the, 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 the town.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
They, they were told they were gonna get compensation, and they did not. This was, Rob and I had talked about it, and it would be more, you know, like, when I needed him in May. He's the first one I called, and he was right there. I would do the same thing for him if he had the same kind of situation, and, you know, he does have somebody that works nineteen hours underneath him, but the nineteen-hour person doesn't do any of his paperwork, doesn't do any of the rabies quarantines or anything like that, so if he was away on vacation, I could do that for him, even though he has other people that work there. But I could do that kind of stuff for him, just like he could do the same kind of stuff for me here. If I had something in the shelter and I have volunteers that I can trust, then they could do the day-to-day stuff, but he would have to do the above and the beyond.
But, but if you're away, and I'm thinking the three at five makes sense, because if in fact he responds to a call and ends up picking up several animals, he's gotta go there during the day, too, to make sure they are taken care of. So for that week, it would be more than just paying for an incident, I would think.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think the five hundred dollars reducing down to fifteen, I think that that's certainly more than acceptable. I just think that it needs to be a little bit more than five hundred.
And it's. Total, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think fifteen hundred is, you know, if Stacy normally takes, say, an average of three weeks, I think five hundred a week, that's, that would be acceptable.
It may be, too, when you work out, if in fact you work out an agreement with Mr. Johnson, that if in fact there are animals in the kennel, that we would pay him the full amount. If he goes out on a call and handles the call and there's nothing in there, he might be willing to just say, okay, for one day, so it may not be the full five hundred.
So I would like to entertain a motion then that we reduce the salary for the assistant A C O. I'll make a recommendation to the Finance Committee of fifteen hundred thousand, so we're increasing it one thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
How are we, if we're decreasing it, isn't that six hundred dollars? Not a thousand? I thought he said.
No, it's, instead of sixteen hundred, it's gonna be a thousand dollars.
Oh, I was looking at the, I'm sorry, I was looking at the departmental request, not the proposing, my apologies.
Their request is sixteen hundred, I'm suggesting that we do a thousand.
I'm okay with that, second.
Second. Any further discussion on that?
I do. I thought we discussed five hundred a week.
Yes.
Yeah, total of fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Increasing.
So there was a, yeah, there was a request. For sixteen hundred, we're gonna make it a thousand, which makes a total of fifteen hundred dollars. Any further?
Math after eight is not my strong suit.
Yeah, this line's gonna be seventy-two pretty soon.
Hey, you can't even say that's an excuse.
I'm not gonna comment.
Any further discussion? On this motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Does anybody else have any other questions about the request? I noticed that we're now asking, unfortunately, we have to ask for money for cremations, that we haven't done that in the past.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can certainly go into that one. So a thousand dollar contractual disposal, for disposal of the roadkill. It's been done in the past, and there's just never been a line item for it. Especially now with the shelter and procuring a freezer to hold roadkill, smaller roadkill for a certain amount of time. Angel View will generally do a cremation, but it's not just one at a time, it's, you know, it goes by, say, the freezer full.
Do they pick up?
They do pick up, but this, this is five hundred dollars for every six months. They come and they'll, if I need them to empty the freezer, they'll come and empty the freezer. Now, before that six months, I have to have them come empty the freezer because it is full, it is closer per pound instead of the one flat fee.
I do have a question, just a general one for the Animal Control Officer. Stacy, if, I assume you usually have enough donations, like food, et cetera. Let's say you didn't, and you had an animal, you have to, I don't know, go get dog food. Where does that come out of your budget?
Care and custody.
Okay. Do we expect?
Is it called care and custody?
It used to be.
Animal health and welfare. It is line fifty-three hundred.
Do we, so you have no increase, and I know now cats are allowed in the shelter, for example, do we expect an, there, that you will need more money from this line? I guess I have a little concern on that. I just wanna make sure there's enough.
The only more money, more money that I might need is if I have to do a lot more staying and neutering, testing, you know, shots and that kind of stuff. Food is very minimal, and if I need something specific, if I put it out there, I have more than I can usually handle. It's, the health and welfare is more for animals when I go to the vets, so.
But you expect this, not an increases, okay?
I, I never know. Some years I use it all, and I ask for more, and other years I don't use hardly any of it. Like, can I, it may have been if I didn't find the owner and this animal was not deceased, that would have been a bad visit for us, but.
I'm just concerned because, like, in fiscal year eighteen, you only ended up using, you know, I'm sorry, I was looking at.
Fifteen forty-four, seventy.
Yeah, fifteen forty, and then it jumped up in nineteen, four thousand one hundred fifty. I just wanna make sure that we're on the right side.
That's a specific incident.
That's why that jumps.
That's a main incident.
And then twenty, okay, it goes back to a thousand.
Do you have a revolving account for gifts?
I do.
So how would you actually access that?
Right now, from what I understand, I have to go through Board Health to access it.
Okay, so you'd make a request, and they would approve it, and then submit the request for payment, whatever.
Twenty-five, about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Oh, that's very good, that's very good. I know you had a sign that said you didn't need certain kinds of cat food, but if people wanted to donate money, you know, that's good.
Yep.
It's kind of a little backup.
I think in general, it's gonna be a work in progress, and the shelter is all new, this is a whole new thing, so probably over the next, certainly the next year, if not the next two to three years, it's gonna be.
A moving target.
Yeah, exactly.
We're discussing now on adoption fees to offset the cost of, you know, getting the animal ready for adoption, because there are costs associated with it that.
I hope I'm here to socialize. There's a lot of things that, at some point, I can do myself. I can't do rabies vaccine, but I can do heartworm testing, and I can do other vaccines and that kind of stuff. But that's all stuff that's gonna come along as the shelter comes along.
And while we have you here, there is a rabies clinic coming up?
April twenty-fifth, two to three at the shelter.
Any other?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I'm excited for the expanded services.
Absolutely.
Any other questions about this budget?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
So, just a couple of other things that are new or an increase. Phone stipend, the A C O currently uses a personal phone. This will come up again on another budget item for the Board of Health, but I think that the standard is a sixty-dollar-a-month phone stipend, so that's been included.
So where is that?
Yeah, I can't.
That's in the top three, and I just noticed that the.
Communications allowance.
Oh, okay.
The proposed increase column wasn't, it didn't populate correctly.
Yeah, it did not.
Like, all of that should be increased, so four hundred and.
Yeah, okay.
Well, there's no account number on that one, right?
Because they're new lines, so.
Benefits communications allowance.
So if you edit the document, like, the formulas get a little hairy. See, it's my fault, I should've fixed the formula. You guys had a lot of changes.
And also, under Communications, had been a hundred, and it's going to be requesting five hundred and eighty, an additional four hundred and eighty dollars, and that's for the Wi-Fi hotspot to provide internet access, which is definitely much needed between the shelter and also on the road to access the licensing.
Does the board have any other questions?
Yes, I'm sorry, just one last one. Mailing subscription for internet hotspot, that is related to the other agenda item, right?
That's what you just.
Okay.
What I just said, yeah, for the, but, yeah, yeah, you're, you're correct, yeah.
We tried to logistically line you guys up. Five eight, uh, five eight total, but it goes up by four, by four eighties.
Does it cost forty dollars a month? So I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Our number is guy.
I know, he is. Logistics, it's taking babies it all out.
Someone has to keep track of this.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then, that we make a recommendation to the Finance Committee.
Miss, I'm sorry, what was that, Mr. Pius?
One, one last one, requested an increase from one hundred dollars to three hundred dollars, and an additional two hundred dollars for travel in the event that the A C O has to use her motor vehicle, spending some vehicle issues.
That's an understatement.
Yeah, just to ensure that there's enough money to cover in case this vehicle issue continues.
Is the new vehicle on the road?
It is in, we're waiting on a title, and it's better than we expected. Were you able to see it? And huge thanks to Detective Richards, he found this vehicle. Thank you to Mannheim, you're actually acknowledging them later this meeting for their donation to this. And he also found a kennel, like, or, I don't know what you call it, actually. Is it a kennel? It goes in the car.
Like a crate.
It's, yeah, it's a kennel. I wouldn't use it for larger dogs, but for cats, it would be awesome.
So thank you to him, and we finally have a resolution to this.
Kudos.
Thanks to everybody.
What's the new, what's the new adjusted total we're looking at?
So it should be minus six hundred dollars, because I think that's the only thing that we've changed.
We say it in the, she's just asking because we say it in the motion.
So your department total ends up being thirty-three thousand one hundred twenty-five eighty-eight cents.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve and send to the Finance Committee a total Animal Control Officer budget of, for FY twenty-one, of thirty-three thousand one hundred five dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
You said one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
No, it should be one hundred and twenty-five. Yeah, I wrote the two, and then I messed up the number. Yes, that should be.
I will second that with the amended number.
Thirty-three, one twenty-five, eighty-eight.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Board of Health regulations and inspections, five ten.
So here the increase went up, I'm sorry, the proposed increases are correct. That column.
Just some increases on this one. First one here, let me find it on the sheet. Under the fifty-three hundred, the last line, the benefits communications allowance, similar to the A C O. Our health agent's also been using his own cellphone for talent purposes, so we're requesting the same sixty-dollar-a-month stipend. We are also requesting under fifty-one oh six, salary assistant health agent, five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
What is, what is that for?
So we're proposing to essentially have a backup for Todd in the event he's on vacation, and there's inspections that one of the board members can't get to, or in the event that Todd gets really backed up, things get crazy with park tests or whatnot, new subdivision, to kind of offset some of the inspections, food and like that. So we would put it out, you know, as a per diem employee, if you will. So just kind of, it's always good to have a backup in the event Todd's on vacation, Todd, you know, is sick for an extended period and anything like that, so that's a proposal.
We had a study of fifteen inspections, like, thirty-five dollars an hour. That would be for three-week vacation coverage for the whole spot. Or I'd be, I had something one day, couldn't be here, so.
That would not be for, take park testings, that can be scheduled in advance, you know, certainly they're not scheduled, a lot of things do come up.
So this, this other increases, all health agent, C O A, and health agent conservation perk review, is that all included then, when you're talking, all under that same category?
What's the C O A health agent? Who is that?
Yeah, what is that?
Who is that?
I can't address it. Couple of years back, and even today, the salary health agent included three different people. Included Alice in the Council on Aging, roughly two hundred and thirty dollars or whatever it was, somewhere around two fifty. Included Charlie Mello, who did the perk test, conservation review, and included Todd Pillings' salary. Well, last year, we forgot about budgeting Charlie Mello in here, so that kind of threw us off by approximately twelve to fifteen hundred dollars. I find it much simpler to create a line for Alice, create a line for the perk, conservation perk agent, and everybody has a separate line, and I think you can track it better to see how much money is being spent on conservation reviews. Yeah, so that's, they're not additional, they just have their own line on the, the salary line for the health agent, fifty-one oh six is reduced.
So you repopu, you redistributed what was redistributed, sorry, what was already budgeted.
Correct.
I have just one quick comment. The benefits, uniform allowance, and communication allowance will actually have to be moved, I can redo this, moved up to the fifty, the fifty accounts, the personnel accounts, that would be voted separately. I have a question, I don't know if that's appropriate, but what are these individuals doing that's different from their jobs that they already get compensated for, that they'd be set, that they'd be compensated through your budget differently?
So kind of, we don't have Mrs. now, that would be new.
Right, no, I'm sorry, I'm referring to Council on Aging and Conservation Perk Review.
So the Conservation Perk Agent Review, it more or less becomes a wash. We, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we take in, when we, when someone comes in for a perk, submit an application, we also take in a fee for conservation for them to review that particular perk before it's signed off on. It's kind of just, we pay conservation, we take the money in, it's kind of just revolving.
So I'm not questioning.
It's an estimated number, they're paid per perk that we take the money in on. Um, the council on aging, that, that I, I'm not sure if Mr. Pires can, can answer that.
Well, I guess, uh, that came with the position. We're at the position with, with Council Executive Director. I know, it sounds a little crazy, but, uh, I guess if there's a health issue that she notices, anything with council on aging, whether it be in primetime or over, uh, Lincoln Village, uh, she notifies the Board of Health and we-
When you can do that.
I was just gonna say, she should be bound to have to do that. If I notice a health violation, I should-
Right.
-be telling you, just because it's a health code violation. So my question, I know that you, this is not new, it's been there. You, you know, you broke it out so now begs the question, but I would just say, why would this not be covered under the job description duties of those two individuals that they're already doing? And both are, which already are compensated for, um, is my argument.
I think-
But I know that it's always been there, so I don't really want to hold up your proceedings here based upon that, but I think the question should be asked.
I think what you had said before, and please correct me if I'm wrong, was that it was just better to track, that's why you broke the things out in the budget, correct? It wasn't that the duties-
All the years.
I guess I get both points, like, you can track it better this way, but nothing has changed, so why?
I think the administrative point is, they really need the budget for it, because it should be part of a job description.
My question.
Correct, like, why get extra money for something you're already doing?
And that's a very valid.
Unless there's a financial contractual agreement already with the, the COA director.
Neither.
I, I don't see any reason to have it.
Wish, but-
I just think, um, it's being paid twice for the same thing and-
Yes.
I reckon, it's not your fault, like, I'm not, like, angry at this, but I recognize it's been there. You breaking this out has brought the question to light, so I, I don't mean to imply that you are at all responsible for anything.
Yes, that sounds all the time, why is that then?
I ask myself all the time, why is it happening?
So, where was it before then?
It was in fifty-one oh six.
All bulked together under health agents, plural.
Always was bulked in fifty-one oh six.
So in being more transparent, um, we've-
I don't do that anymore.
No, always do that, that's good, that's good.
No, I, I don't see a necessity for it myself, so.
And is that included in the conservation perk review also that?
No, that's, that's a needed-
Is that a separate thing he does outside of his conservation committee position?
Oh, it's part of conservation, actually.
See, I would argue that it's the same work.
Does he get paid for conservation?
Yes, he's the, he's the clerk.
Is he the only one that does the inspections?
Those, yes.
Well, then that's over and above what other committee members are getting paid to do, if he's the only one. My only thought is, I don't want to duplicate payments, but if you think of, if I members on that CONCOM and they're all getting the same money or comparable money-
They're not, only one is paid and he's paid for being, like, the clerk and handling all the paperwork. The rest of them are compensated.
But is it the same person that's doing these inspections?
Yes.
Okay, does he get a flat rate, does he submit hours?
Twenty-five dollars a visit.
I'll let Mr. Agia speak to this.
And so I asked this question years ago when I was more involved with the Board of Health. From what I understand, Charlie has always had a setup where he did the inspections for the Board of Health at the rate of twenty-five dollars per. The problem is the Board of Health collects the money, it goes to the general fund, you have to pay a lot of the line item within their budget, it doesn't go directly to Charlie. So, it raises the question, is that outside of what the stipend is for? Should that be included in it? I asked that question years ago, I didn't get an answer, um, so I think it's relevant at this point.
To me, it seems like a perk, and I, it's not nefarious, it's been like this, so I don't mean to imply that, but somebody is doing a job and getting paid twice for it, two people. Two people are doing a job and getting paid twice for it. To me, both functions fall under the umbrella of those roles in the job descriptions. I get, I get that it's always been this way.
So the only explanation that I, the only explanation that I could come up with when I, when I asked this question was that if it was a member who was not compensated, who was doing the inspections, then the twenty-five dollars would be appropriate. I'm not sure if they've agreed as a commission that Charlie's the one who does it and he just happens to be the one who also gets the stipend. It could be as simple as that.
Is-
Yeah, it's okay, I'm sorry, it's coming up for you.
Well-
The job description for the position he holds, does it say both will be court, take the minutes and is responsible for inspections? Cause if inspections are not in the job description, then it's over and above. I just want the, the right thing.
Before we just kill this one, I think we should investigate Charlie and the CONCOM and see, see what's going on with it.
And you know what, while we're at it-
It is over and above his duties, yes.
Right, the other question is about the health agent, let's find out if that one's right and what's specifically spelled out in there. I understand, I understand, um, why it was included in the top, but now that it's been pulled out, it's a question. So I think we want to make sure-
Talking about COA?
Yeah.
Oh, I think, yeah. I think, I think you can strike that COA one.
Oh, you think so? Okay.
Yeah. And, and-
Strike it?
Unless there's some-
Let's investigate, I would prefer-
Unless there's some contractual, financial agreement that the town has with the COA director, I feel that that can be, be stricken.
Well, we'll get together and chat about this, right?
Okay.
Um, may, may I request that we hold this budget and revisit till-
I'll entertain a motion and we continue this to our next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Five nineteen, Board of Health Administration.
I think there's only two increases on this one, uh, the first being-
Communications.
Under the communications for the, uh, an additional twenty-five hundred dollars. This is up from the four hundred, uh, mainly for, for the printing and mailing, um, of recycling, uh, information to try and reduce our contamination. The better our recycling contamination is, or the, the less contamination we have, at the end of the day, um, the town winds up in a, in a better situation on, on the waste and disposal, um, budget. So, we, we have a, a mailing that's, that's all prepared, um, that, that we're gonna try to get out.
But this won't be-
We want to make it a yearly.
Right, so, but this won't be, this is for next fiscal year.
Correct, but-
Yeah, ideally, we'd like to put out a newsletter, twice a year maybe, to update everyone on, uh-
Would this be mailed, Mr. Chairman, or something like?
We have a, we have a six by nine postcard going out very shortly.
Oh, okay. You'll do like a DeBol printing, that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Regarding recycling, that should be out in a couple of weeks.
You know what was really helpful, and I still have it in my house from probably when it was built in the seventies, is like, uh, it's really, uh, like a magnet that you put, you know, on your fridge or whatever and it mentions like what's allowed and what's not allowed in your recycling. I thought that was kind of cool, we still have it, so, blast. But on a mailer, it's the same thing, so, I think that's helpful, for sure.
Well, do you have the funds to ma-, do that mailing now, though?
Yes.
You do, okay. No, I think it's important to communicate to the public as to what they can, cannot recycle. I think there's gonna be some inspections of people's, uh-
Ultimately, the, the more communication we do and public outreach we do, we can also qualify for more grant money from the DEP. So, at the end of the day, we, we may be putting out money, but we can also get money in return.
You're gonna mention the hazardous waste in this mailing too? You got a hazardous waste day coming up?
It's, uh, gonna be on the website and, uh, it's not a mailing, but-
No, my, is it included in the mailing you're talking about?
On the date of that, I don't recall.
No, well, it would be, your hazardous waste days before the end of the fiscal year.
Then June thirteenth.
No, we, we have a mailing, I think the, the, the actual, um, card mailings were printed, or it's sent to the printer before we had-
Oh, it's already gone, it's already gone, yeah.
Oh, so, just a thought, um, check with Mrs. Brady, because she'll be preparing the warrant and, you know, you have to, a certain number of pages. If there is space in the warrant, there can be an announcement added after the signatures and all that other stuff. It doesn't cost anything extra, she would have to know, though, but if you want to announce it, because that mailing for the town meeting is going to be going out before your hazardous waste day. And everyone's gonna get it.
Is Mrs. Brady ready?
The one and only.
Oh, yeah. Insert it.
Well-
Did we talk about it?
Yeah, if she has space, exactly, cause sometimes we have to say, we gotta, it's better not to mail out a half a blank page or a blank page, but if, since your hazardous waste day's coming up, she could insert something, you just need to give her the info, she could fit it in after the warrant.
It's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
And you can also provide the board with an information and we can do it as an announcement, as we get closer to the-
But that would save you mailing again, at least, you know, whatever, the extra-
And you know it goes to everybody.
Yeah.
Right.
You said there were two things that they were increasing, so.
Yep, uh, the other is under professional and technical, um, an additional five hundred dollars, um, basically to, we're just receiving more complaints, more public records requests, just, just a lot more, um.
Do you get a lot?
And also-
Significant amount.
Yeah, we get a lot.
We do not have a legal line and we were fortunate that Attorney Agia was able to help us.
Numbers guy and a words guy as well.
He was able to help us with, uh, the shop slot road.
One issue can blow the whole-
And had that gone way beyond what we anticipated, it would have cost us some money.
Are you licensed to practice a master's?
No. Matt and I do a good job.
It's life's dream.
Yeah, between the two of them, they get it done.
So is professional and technical gonna include legal advice or not?
It currently does.
That's where we take it from.
Oh, it does, oh, okay.
Where we take it from.
So Mr. Agia, is this?
This is how rumors start, everybody, right here.
I'm just a team player, that's all.
He's another softy like me, so.
Are there any other questions that we have, uh, on this, uh, five nineteen?
Do you want to-
Not really pertaining to the budget.
Is that, please?
Sanitation?
No, we're not done with this one.
No, we're not there yet.
I do have a question, how is the town nest working now? How are things going?
Very good.
Good.
I'll entertain a motion then.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, uh, Department Budget five-one-nine as prepa-, presented.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Um, that is it for tonight, I have no idea why emergency preparedness did not make it on here, nor did the sanitation, so we might be seeing it again.
Street cleaning, stormwater.
It's not there. I think I have street cleaning and stormwater on when Tom Ferry's here, um, which is next time, but I apologize.
Just as a select representative, I think you're involved with this one, the emergency call system.
It's more of like a notification.
Yeah, but they had mentioned, we may not need this four thousand.
Okay.
Great news.
Uh, I think-
You were somehow involved, I heard, with-
The town administrator and I are involved, cause we, we-
Be there on Tuesday.
We know the website, so we'll be meeting with the office manager and Mr. Pilling next Tuesday. Um, I think we should keep it in there, but I, I do want to say that, um, we do emails, the town administrator does the newsletter, I also do like the weekly events and the agendas. We were able to do that for free, keep it in there, but I'm actually thinking unless they have to assist us in, um, like, designing something, which I don't foresee, I think we can do this on the slide.
We just need to, yeah, not on the slide, very much on the end of note, but-
No, it's up and up, but I mean, no additional cost.
With our own regular resources.
Like, we'll do this in-house and they've been pretty good working with us. I don't think that we should incur additional charges for that, but let's keep it in.
So the other item, the agricultural committee budget, that we took out of course, do we have that here?
I actually never received a copy of this.
Well, it was just approved last night and I don't, I was not there, so I don't know what was approved.
So can we hold us until-
We can hold it, yeah, cause they would-
Is it okay to hold it until next meeting?
They wouldn't have seen it yet, so that is a good point.
Oh, all right.
I actually did not even see that, so I apologize.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we table action on the agricultural commission budget to next week, or the next meeting.
Second.
So a second, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. So we're gonna go back.
To J?
Uh, we actually skipped E, uh, but-
No, no, but we have people here, so is there any way that we can, like, why would we make them sit there?
We need to, yeah, J, L, and then the rest of M, for who's-
Yeah, I think we should try to be courteous, but it's up to, it's up to the chairman.
You want J, L, and?
J and L, I think, are the, right? Did I miss them?
J, L, and then the rest of M, um, the building commissioners budgets are on this.
J, yep, J, L.
I shouldn't say the rest of them.
And then, can we go to two forty-one after that in the budget?
Yeah, the two forty-one.
Yep.
Is there a second on that motion?
Um, yeah, I'll second it. Are we gonna do, when are we gonna do E, D, E, F, and G?
I thought just to skip over those until, um, you know, basically consideration of their time.
Okay.
Our meeting went a little bit longer than I expected.
Okay, all right.
So, we're doing, uh, builder inspection, but should we also do, uh, gas inspection, plumbing and electrical?
Those are all heads, yes.
We'll do the, what, two forty-one through two forty-five, Mr. Chairman, that's my motion if I'm making one.
Okay, and I second it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it, so we're gonna go first to J, discuss installing a security system and purchase an additional wireless hotspot at the animal shelter.
Matt?
Yes?
So I did speak with the contractor who installed the security system in Old Town Hall, um, he did finally respond to my inquiries, so I think we made progress. Karen and I need to, uh, have a conference with him over the implementation of next door, so I'm back on track, willing to move forward and get a price on the shelter. Off the record, he said it would be cheaper than the Town Hall installation, Old Town Hall installation, which was thirty-eight hundred. Uh, but I don't have a hard number from him yet, he actually has to go out and visit the site, so, um, so it looks like it is palatable, it looks like it might be in the two to three thousand dollar range, maybe, um, so, it's, we can-
You know, I know, um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, money is money and I know three thousand dollars is a lot of money, but I also feel very passionately we got grant money. Um, we could not have, we may not have been able to renovate it without the state monies and I think that we should in, make this investment and really try to protect our investment. The other issue, the other cons, potential concern, I should say, is if we do have volunteers in and out, I really would feel a lot more, uh, less cautious having a security system over there and also some Wi-Fi. There is not a cell signal over there, so if there, you know, I think we should, uh, try to make this investment.
I just have a, is the three thousand dollars the, a one-time and then there's just a smaller annual fee?
Correct.
Okay.
What's the annual fee, Mr. Commissioner?
I don't remember, Karen, do you remember? I don't remember. It wasn't, it wasn't a lot of money.
Like a hundred, like, okay.
Yeah, it wasn't a lot of money.
So, we're gonna, um, you'll see Budget one ninety-two towards the end, um, just because there's some other questions, that's the public buildings account. But you'll see one ninety-two again and it will accommodate for these annual increases.
Okay, okay.
So I know that we spent the twenty-five thousand grant money already and then we also appropriate, our town also appropriate, matching twenty-five thousand, have we spent all that?
I believe that's exhausted.
Slightly over, actually.
Okay. So, there's no money left for this.
Okay, let that well dry, thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
It's beautiful.
Just a point, I know it sounds really like a paranoid, but I'm not, I'm really not paranoid, but can I, I almost had, I almost had to call the cops to the facility, not because, just because of the situation of her coming from Brockton to, and she was really upset. And she was really mad at her boyfriend because he, she thought he left them out of the, the house. Is there gonna be like a panic button or something that, thank you, that's all I wanted to know.
Actually, there will be now, so.
Only because, I, I, as I said, I'm not scared of people, but I could see, not for me.
But I never know.
Not for me, but for that situation, for the volatile, not so much for me, but that one for that.
I think that's very important, glad you brought that up, some things to address.
You'd rather be over-prepared than under-prepared.
I wouldn't have thought like that, this is Dyson, but he can never be too short, right, so, yeah.
Amen.
Beautiful day today, you never know.
Well, our employees are our greatest asset, so when I said protect our investment, I was referring to you, Stacy.
And I was a probation officer for thirty-five years and one of the towns that we had was Dyson, so I can tell you that there was crying everywhere.
Yep, amen.
So reassuring.
Significantly less, I hope, but still exists.
So, uh-
Yep.
We can't, um, act on this because we don't know what the figure is yet, so-
Correct, but I-
We can continue this to-
But, well, I guess you're in favor, what I'm hearing tonight is you're in favor for us to pursue it.
Yeah.
And-
We're gonna get the final.
I'll make a motion, uh, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make it, make a motion that we authorize, uh, either whoever, the Animal Control Officer, the Building Commissioner, or the town, and/or the town administrator to pursue and research the ins, uh, installing the security system and also purchasing the additional wireless hotspot in the, uh, subscription that comes with it.
Panic button, yep.
And, yes, I, I assume that's all part of the security system.
Do you second that, Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Any further discussion, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, abstention, abstention, the ayes have it.
Good work.
And we went to L, is that the next one that we're gonna, that we took out of board, discussion of Town Hall renovations?
I'm gonna, uh, we already most, we already moved it, sorry.
Yep.
We're good, whenever you're ready, Mr. Commissioner.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, is this talking about the renovations and the money part of it, or?
Yep, we're, we're, we're here tag teaming, cause, um, we need to know, we need to know funding steps, funding steps.
Frank discussions.
So, uh, I think, as you're aware, the ACO project is done, um, I can multitask, but there is a limit, I moved on to the chargers, that's coming through, uh, the town administrator, it's Strater and I are working on the green communities implementation, all of those.
Thank you very much.
Upgrades, so.
And Mrs. Brady, I know, boss has been very.
So I understand it, that should be fairly user-friendly, so it won't take a lot of my time, so with that said, we'd like to move on to the lower level Town Hall renovations, and discuss upper level renovations, cause they are sort of intermingled. So, in doing that, um, I'm in favor, I think I've said before, I don't like phasing things in, although things will take logistically, it's some time to get done, I think we should look at this project, this building in particular, and just move forward with the lower level reconfiguration and the enhancements upstairs. Upstairs, we're not gonna have a lot of wall moving, uh, there's very little, but the carpet, as I understand it, is original or very old, uh, so I think we need to discuss an earnest effort into revitalizing this building.
I don't, I want my colleagues to know that, um, I think we all recognize the carpeting needs to be replaced, I, I will take, uh, the heat on this one, I feel very strongly that the carpeting needs to be replaced, so I don't want all the heat to be on our town officials, I feel really passionately about this, also, part of the reason I do is because I saw how good the downstairs looks, um, and it's really, really impressive. And I, I like the style that was chosen, I assume it was your aesthetic, Mr. Commissioner, I like that because you picked a design that isn't gonna, it's gonna be very difficult to make it look dirty, um, and I think that, that was very intelligent, I appreciate that.
I appreciate that. So, with that said, I, I will look at for the input of the board, um, I know the town administrator has ideas about money, where we put it, et cetera, et cetera, so we can just expand upon that, if you will.
Well, I, 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 we don't have a, uh, the, uh, delay by law on competent removal competent like that, like four years.
I can't find the historical value of this.
We haven't had the experts, uh, review it, Mr. Commissioner.
Question is whether it's wise to replace it with competent, or should we think of something else, laminated floors, like that, only because, uh, I heard that competent holds germs and everything else, so it's not necessarily, you know, you're not allowed to have it on the bathroom and kitchens anymore, that there was a thing you could do years ago, so.
So it's a good question, in an office environment, the problem with not having carpeting is the acoustics, and when you have an office environment that has multiple staff members, the acoustics are horrible, each one, I mean, they can hear each other now, when you have carpeting, it absorbs some of that, so if we put hard floors in, we'd have to do other things in the room to absorb the sound waves, so that we wouldn't have the echoing effect.
But they have laminated floor, not necessarily saying hardwood floor, but laminated floor, and it has a cushion underneath it, I hope that's.
Right, but that's only, um, for the feel of it, the sound acoustics still bounces off the laminated floor.
Slip and falls are also more common.
I'm sorry?
Slip and falls would be more common.
Yeah, slip and falls would be another, I'm trying to think of that, um, so, I mean, we, I think one of the plans, I don't think, by having me take over some of the facilities, or all facility stuff, is that we are now maintaining things in ways that we never did. So we could certainly look at copper cleaning, that would be routine, that we could do, um, just HVAC systems alone, implemented a filter changing policy, we now change filters every sixty days, whether they need it or not, I'm finding out that that's a very good interval to do it. So now our indoor air quality has gone up, so obviously the next step is this, and then we want to make sure it stays clean, maybe in some entrance areas, I may consider doing something so that we have, uh, some hard surfaces there, like I, I did lower level of Old Town Hall, I actually used an outdoor grade rubber back carpeting in the foyer, which traps all the debris, it doesn't get beneath the carpet, and it's removed every week with our normal cleaning, so we may be able to do something like that here.
Was your idea, I'm sorry, you can continue, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no.
I just wanted to ask, was the idea, and I don't even know if there's idea, conceptually, was the idea to have the same carpet like we do now, upstairs and downstairs, so have that carpet style design from downstairs and up on the, uh, top floor as well?
So if you're referring to the meeting room carpet?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's the old zoning board.
I, what I haven't thought of, and, and certainly my decision is an absolute, I haven't decided, thought about if I would change it up, or change patterns, things like that, I haven't really thought that far.
So you're not, I, I think that's good, I, I don't mind.
Like, for instance, this room, I think, should be differentiated from the rest of the office areas, because it is a subject changes.
And it's on camera, and, yeah, I get that, I like that, good thing.
Right, exactly. But I hadn't given that much thought to it, I need the money first, then I start to think about it.
Well, a horse before the cart, right, I like that.
So I, I, I would encourage the selectmen and the people at home to support, um, spending some money here to, um, to upgrade the building, um, you know, it, it's good for morale, it's good for taxpayers, I, I know you said eloquently last year with the, the repaving of the pa- parking lot.
Oh, so good.
It makes a big difference.
So good.
Just people coming to work and people visiting Town Hall, and I think that would be echoed in the building as well.
Chairs are the same, chairs are the same.
Old Town Hall, I mean, just.
Old Town Hall?
Phenomenal, phenomenal.
Beautiful. My, oh, I'm sorry.
So we don't have a cost on this?
We don't really know what we want to do.
We don't have a firm cost, but I can say it'll probably be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars.
So which is why I've requested this to be here, because I need to know, special article, wha- what we've been doing with this building specifically, is funding the bi- uh, public buildings one ninety-two and doing smaller, smaller changes here and there.
Okay.
Um, I think a special article is a little bit more appropriate, but that does come with some more challenges about who does the work, and things like that.
Sure, I think, may, may I make a comment on that idea? Um, so, we probably, in my opinion, it's, it's not as convenient, right, as having this money in the operating budget, I know there is a, yeah, sort of an efficiency that you can get when it's in the operating budget, however, I agree, I think that, um, my personal opinion is, we really should say to, to residents that this is the money specifically for this thing, and so that we are, you know, beholden to, to that, so, um, it's, it makes things, uh, a little more hairy, or it can, um, and I recognize that, but I think that we really should, uh, make the choice clear, um, via a special article, um, and really let people speak to it, I really honestly think, even making it a special article, I think people know what we did with the Old Town Hall, they know what the town is capable and our town officials are doing with just a little, you know, a little bit of money, um, I say a little bit, I mean, compared to like a new building, um, cost-wise, so I think that we should do a special article, and, um, I'd love to know if my colleagues, uh, share that sentiment.
Do we have a floor plan for this floor, and are we ready to move ahead with it, forget the carpet, that's part of that, but what is this floor gonna look like as, when the renovations are finished?
Like layout?
The layout is, is basically exactly the way it is now, but offices would move, then, the only area that would be changed would be the clerk, collectors, and the accounting office, we would have to, uh, work on more accessibility to those two departments. Accessibility, I mean accessibility people with, um, uh, disabilities, so, um, there may be a little bit of work in the assessors office for that same reason, because their counter is not accessible, um, but wall reconfigurations up here, there isn't gonna be a lot. There is gonna be relocation of offices, though.
Right.
Which is gonna open up the space so that we can spread out the clerk, collector's office, uh, but there isn't gonna be major disruptions upstairs, downstairs, there will be new walls basically everywhere, from the meeting room, all the way to the stairwell, that will be completely redesigned.
So.
With, on.
No, I'm sorry.
But I've already showed the selectmen that floor, I think we've got.
So those closets are coming out downstairs? Alright, so that's what would be coming out, who, what, and some of the people, town accountant's office is gonna move downstairs?
Where the, yes, where the planning board is.
Where the planning board is now?
Correct, and the planning board's gonna move over to, uh, the area where the sewer is.
Planning and CBA.
Separated, yeah.
Planning and CBA.
And where's sewer gonna go?
They, they're gonna be there, but the, they'll no longer have.
They have half the space, right?
Oh, alright, okay, so, so the major wall changes are all downstairs?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's gonna, if I remember correctly, there's gonna be an area for, say, for example, the town historian.
Yes.
Star commission, or whatever, there's gonna be a computer that we can all access.
Correct.
And we can, uh, we have a file cabinet, for example, in the conservation, uh, that's gonna be, cable's gonna protect that area, I believe, so we're gonna have an area to put our file cabinet, maybe in that, area that we're talking about that.
Yes, and the, the exact size of that is fluid, we'd have to see how many people are gonna use that space.
Are we gonna keep the meeting room?
Oh, yes.
The way that is.
Oh, yes, not, not gonna be touched.
So regarding the money, is there any money in the current budget, FY twenty, that can be used, no?
We're, 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 we're gonna be really close.
We're saving, yeah, we're saving it, cause we're in the middle of the year, but there's not enough to even make a dent in this project.
Yeah. Don't forget to, um, I, I believe it was increased, but, but not by much, last year, last fiscal year, and I've implemented some new programs to maintain the buildings, which is, costs money.
We also didn't wanna do too much differently, because we took on the, a new police station, we didn't know what that would entail, so.
Um, so I don't have a problem with a separate article, um, isn't that what we did for Old Town Hall?
It is, yeah, yes.
And I think that that was, that was the best way, I mean, I really do, I think it's clear what, what is gonna be spent on this specific thing, so, um, I know it's a, could be, you know, could be an easier way to do it, but, um.
It's appropriate.
Yep, I agree, good recommendation.
So I, I would just encourage, because this is, this is your building, um, if there's anything that you think needs to be done, other than what's been discussed tonight, I, I would need to know, so we can put a fairly good number together for a special article at the town meeting, I'm presuming you wanna do this for this town meeting, correct?
It's the annual.
Yeah, can I ask, uh, for a little elaboration, so I also have felt very strongly, and actually, this board, um, agreed at the time, but then we couldn't use the grant funds for it, I really think we need to redo, like, the, some of the windows, or just at least, I don't know, check the ceiling of them, make sure that everything is how it should be. Is, is that what you're thinking of when, when you say that, I know you may not have had anything in mind, I'm not putting you.
So, I, I was only going to repair windows that I'm aware that are either defunct or broken, the doors downstairs are gonna be replaced in their entrance way, but I was not looking at changing all the windows, if that's something you wanna do, we can certainly explore that, um, but.
I would like us to at least explore it, when I say explore it, I mean, I wanna have an idea of how much it would cost extra outside of the scope of what we have in mind for a renovation, so, um, I'm not putting any pressure in that way, I just, I'm curious to know how much it would be.
And I think that would be a separate article, too, cause I wouldn't want them tied together and lose, lose the whole thing.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, sure.
And I'm not saying.
Windows would most certainly be an outside vendor.
And, and I'm not saying I want to do a special article on it, I literally just wanna have an idea of how much it would cost, if I wanna pursue it or not.
So we'll get together and itemize out a punch list.
Okay.
You'll see the figures, and then you can take off things as you.
Okay.
See the cost, and put together.
I'm sorry, the, the one thing I didn't mention, I wanna mention, cause this is important, is, um, the current copy room, mailroom, will actually become a break room, so, and there'll be a sink there that's usable to wash dishes out and whatnot, so we're not going into the restrooms. I was not gonna completely renovate the bathrooms upstairs, um, so if that's something you wanna do, then we need to talk about that as well.
When do you have?
Regarding that, then, yes, we, we've got the grant for self-evaluation for ADA compliance, and it's, we got a temporary tour, somebody from, uh, the office disability, and he found some problems with the bathroom, so those will have to be corrected this time, but as a result of this self-evaluation we're gonna have, there may be some changes in this building that we're gonna have to address at this time, so we have to take that into consideration when we're talking about monies, and I also obviously want the ADA coordinator to be thoroughly involved with this, before we start tearing anything down that he, uh, is aware of, what's, what we're gonna do.
I have, I'm sorry, no, I just wanted to piggyback off what you said, Mr. Chairman, not only do I think functionally the bathrooms need to be redumped, but let's be honest, style-wise, they need to be redone, so.
I said that in two thousand seven, and all I got was, I did get them cleaned, cause that was another issue, but.
That's progress.
Oh my god. My concern about, I can speak for the ladies' room, the ventilation there is terrible.
Yeah.
Now, I realize that the way this building is constructed, and the way the chimney has to go through the back of the building roof, even though it's over there in the front, I mean, when the building was built, that's why that chimney is whatever, but I think the ceilings in the ladies' room, I'll say restrooms, should be dropped, number one, but number two, there's got to be something done to ventilation, because, um, I'll ju- that says it off, the other thing is, will, will there be a central copy area, or, wh- when you take over that room, where is, I, cause I don't have blueprints on the drawings.
My, my initial thought, and I, I, I know I haven't shared a drawing with you, um, is where the clerk is now, that area would become a small copy area, that could be used by everyone, so.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay.
We did share something with us, though, didn't you?
I, I, I mean, I might have.
I mean, just. Yeah, I just don't have it with me tonight.
Okay.
So.
No, that's fine.
Well, so we have to, um, sorry, in the interest of time, cause we've got a lot to do, so, we'll go to the drawing board, take this conversation, itemize everything out, get estimates, and then you can kinda, à la carte it, um, and then I will, we do have to work on the ADA thing, because some of this work might trip ADA compliance, like mandatory, there's, you gotta do it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm aware of what triggers that I have within my codes, but I also understand that the town has embraced accessibility.
Yep.
Just one last question, uh, what, this, this, um, movement that you're, I, I don't know what you call it, did you get grant funds to?
We got a thirty thousand dollar grant fund for a self-evaluation.
How does that timeline work in with this, to get the warrant?
You may have worked.
June thirtieth, twenty twenty, is, I need that report in hand, so.
When is that?
June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
So it's after the, the Old Town meeting, so we may have to maybe cushion it a little bit, when we, we're talking about monies.
Okay.
Or we just work out an appropriate timeline.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So, I mean.
I mean, arguably, we would have a draft.
This, I, I want every.
That, yeah.
I, I think, I think the board and everyone at home, and everyone who works here should know, this is not a three or four month project, this is a project that's gonna take perhaps a year or better to get complete, fully implemented.
Even more reason to earn.
Because we have to stay functional while we're doing it, so the logistics are very complicated.
We're gonna do downstairs first, because we're, we're gonna have people blocking downstairs, so then you can take the work up here, so.
Exactly.
So, just, just to refresh, a town accountant's office will become the office for?
The clerk.
She will be getting her own office.
Would it be better, would it be better if the treasurer went there, because the tax collector and the clerk used the window, and I know you gotta lower that, to make it compliant, but that window was used for tax collection and public records, telling my thought.
They talked it out, right, Mr. Commissioner?
I'm sorry?
The two town treasurer and town clerk's office spoke about this, and then.
They did, they did, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, no, they did, and, um, the i- the idea was that the customer service area was gonna be right where the vault is, so that they would share a customer service area, um, but it'd be much wider than it is now, so that you don't have people on top of one another when they're talking, but because of the number of employees that each office has, the clerk would take the smaller space, and the collector would take the larger space, uh, which is where they are now.
Collector treasurer.
Collector treasurer, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, alright.
As long as the same line, I think the, uh, tax assessors office to the counter is, is not correct, so that's, that all has to be addressed at the same time, so it is, gonna be a little bit of a bother, I understand why it's not gonna be three or four month, uh, project.
That has to be done, yeah, right.
Is this, are you going to use highway department employees as much as you can?
Uh, I will when we can, with a special article, the.
Prevailing wage applies.
Prevariance applies, so we're gonna have to discuss that.
Why that's a problem, it's not a problem, but why that is frustrating, is because kicking that means we would have to do certified weekly payrolls on our own personnel, and then change their, potentially change their rate of pay based upon the job they're doing, and it's just an added layer, I don't know what else.
Did that kick in next door?
Uh, it should have.
Oh, alright, we'll leave it in there.
That's right.
Okay.
I will say that we, our unions are what sets the prevailing wage for those types of jobs, but a paint, if they were painting, you know, that might be different, we don't know, we'd have to request it every time.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
So we'll get another update at a future meeting, so we know what's happening, and, okay, one on the, one on this project, one on best guess about windows, so we will know what we're gonna do about that.
Sure.
Just informational, just curious.
I will follow on it, those are very expensive.
I know, no, I totally am, I, I have no illusions about this.
That, that could eclipse two hundred thousand.
Okay, wow, I still want the cost, but it may be something we throw in the trash.
If it could be done partially.
It could.
Like one floor and one floor.
I was just thinking, like, how much is all of this collectively, and?
Yeah.
I was just thinking, like, how much is all of this collectively, and, well, this is.
Are the windows already double glazed, do we have double glazed windows now?
They are, but they're so old that the seals of, most of them have broken down.
I've seen in conservation, for example, there's one, one you can't even look out of, because it's a seals problem, but the others looked okay, but it's something we need to, to look at, so why don't we go down to, uh, two forty-one, on the review budgets, bill inspection?
We don't need to take any vote on the three-year term, I just wanna, we're good?
Well, we have our marching orders, and then we'll be back.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Yeah.
Two forty-one.
So I, I noticed in the salary for the building commissioner, and we've been given, uh, in a lot of cases, they have a two percent increase, and it's a three and a half percent increase, so if you wanna elaborate on that.
Sure, so the town administrator has been asking me for quite some time to, uh, discuss a contract with her. I've not seen a need for a contract in my entire career, however.
I've changed.
I think, I think I'm at a time in my career where it's probably appropriate, so what I did, we have not started even discussing a contract with myself. I have an idea, I don't know if it's gonna be well received, to give myself a two percent raise and a one percent incentive, so that's why you're seeing that. So it's really a three percent increase, but because of the extra days in the, in the year, it kicks it up the other half percent.
So i, is there extra days, because the last fiscal year, there was extra days, and I, then I thought I went back to, uh.
No, I, we, we were all.
Maybe we got, like, February twenty-ninth, for example.
Yeah.
Yep, right there. Two days.
Two working days, okay.
Right. And I think it works out almost perfectly to an, an extra half percent.
So, clarify for me then what the incentive is, then, I'm, I'm not sure what, you said there's a two percent, you're asking for two percent plus a one percent incentive, so what?
Yeah, I may tie in the one percent incentive to my, um, job evaluation, my employee evaluation.
Just so you know, I won't speak for the finance committee, but I think they, they're firm on that.
Okay, that's fine.
Just, just so you're aware of that.
Sure. And I, this is the first time I brought it up, so, um.
You'll be okay?
Yes.
I apologize, I don't know what's, like, wrong with me, but I am.
It's very hot in here, just so the public is aware.
Taking a recess.
I think the contract's definitely a good idea, because the board changes, we saw what happened with the town accountant, I'll leave it at that. We got one other contract, and I wish he would consider signing a contract for his own safety.
In, if my opinion counts in this, I think every non-union, um, department head should consider a contract, because there's no personnel bylaw, there is no rule. It's a, it's a massive fault line, really, you just fall in this crack, because there's no personnel bylaw, there's nothing that pertains to them.
I guess my position is, I'm not gonna force someone to have one, um, if the town accountant, the former town accountant had wanted one, I would've entertained it, I think that's really up to them, so if, Mr. Commissioner, you are interested in one, we'll have that conversation, if you're not, you don't have to have one, that's just my opinion, I'm not gonna force you or anybody.
Sure, I, I actually think after deep consideration, that it's probably a good time in my career to do it, so I'm not opposed to it. It's just something that's never come up, I, I'm fortunately, I'm no more worried about having a job tomorrow, um, but I, I understand it completely. And then I, I'm not sure if your budget reflects, cause I did send the overall revision, um, it does, it's changed.
The correction?
Okay, correction, changed, all right. So there's a small amount of money in an overtime line, um, because my department is, um, I wouldn't say short-staffed, but we're, basically, it's just Nancy and I, other than Perdi and people, um, there is a need for, uh, comp time, which is what's currently being used, I'm actually, um, I'm in agreement with the town administrator, I'm not a fan of comp time, uh, I think it's an unfunded liability, it shouldn't be carried on the books, so, um, I took overtime out of my budget, the request of selectmen in the past, but I see no way that I can run my office without a small amount of overtime in it. Particularly when I'm on vacation, or Nancy's on vacation, there is a little bit of a backlog when each of us returns, so, aside from adding a body, which I'm not in favor of, I think a small amount of overtime, um, would satisfy the needs of the department.
So this is the twelve fifty we're talking about, right?
Right, right, and, and I intend to, um, eliminate comp time in the office.
I thank you for your, um, consideration of limiting overtime and doing all you can do to avoid that, I appreciate it.
No, also not a fan of overtime, but I was just looking historically, it was, uh, eight thousand dollars was spent in twenty eighteen, so I, you know, I would rather have it be nothing, but I, I'm certainly, uh, gonna, uh, respect the twelve fifty, I think that that's, uh, fine, I have no issue with that.
Collective with you and Mrs. Pinto.
The sick leave buyback.
Yes, not you, I don't mean you, I just meant the line, I'm sorry.
Sorry?
The sick leave buyback is gone?
Yeah, as I understand it, there was a change in the union contract, which increased the number of hours for buybacks, so Nancy's not eligible.
None of them have reached.
Right.
The amount necessary to trip it.
So I'm okay with a two percent increase in your salary, but, um, I don't think we've ever, ever given anybody else that one percent incentive, if they do well in their evaluation, I'm not sure we should be starting that practice now.
I, now, the way I look at it, I'm just, I'm gonna discuss it with the town administrator, and then we'll bring it to the, the board, and if I go strongly about it, it'll be in the contract.
I don't have a problem with the three point five, um, I'll leave the five off, cause that's, I think that's the two days, so three percent, um, and as a matter of fact, I like the idea of tying it to evaluations, that was part of the reason why we developed an evaluation form, and asked employees to establish goals and things like that, so I think, I think, so I think that's important, um.
Can I ask you a question about that, of the board?
Um, my other thought is that, um, just, just one other thing. What we know happened with the library director last year, she asked for something, it was, it was relatively low, but then what she actually got was much more, because townspeople supported it, so however this all comes out, it's still gotta go to town meeting, and I know that townspeople were very, um, happy with her and gave her what she requested, so, and it was, certainly, it's not, it's a percentage higher than what you're talking about, but I'll just leave it at that.
So, uh, based on what, what I've heard tonight, uh, I'm okay with, um, the three point five percent, I think it's without question, that you have been very busy and checking things off a very long checklist, uh, my, uh, suggestion to the board is that, I know the building commissioner, uh, does a very good job, my concern is not a performance evaluation, but I do think if we are going, as you stated, selectmen Goulart, to base, uh, raise in terms of percentage on performance evaluations, that we need to have a structure based on the scoring that says that if you are this score.
Titleist, right?
Okay, because it needs to be, it needs to be fair, and this is not about any particular employee, it's really not, it's just for everybody, that should be the whole point of doing the evaluation, is that there are objective criteria, you get a score, if you get this score, you get this percent raise, and, and all of that is up for discussion, what those numbers are.
So I had actually emailed you, but I think it might've been in that time you were having some issue, and I will resend it again, but I wanted,
Okay.
you and I are supposed to work on that.
Yeah, that's the end of the evaluation thing.
So after I had finished with, I point to you, I'm sorry, but after I finished the evaluation process with the department head, um, it was just very pointed, uh, department head contracts, uh, excuse me, department head evaluations, I had developed like a little spectrum based upon, off of last year's conversations, and then just a couple of scenarios, I won't, I shared it with you, because we were just spent to work on it, but I will send it again, yes, I will send it again.
Finishing that formal process, yes.
For what it's worth, I do believe it should be based upon an evaluation score, because it is fair, and it's merit-based, and it shows why you have decided the way that you have.
Uh, if I could take the floor for a second, I'm a little old-school, I think if you have a good evaluation, I mean, you're doing a good job, and, and hooray for you, and that's what we should all, that should be our goal, that we always do the best we can, and I'm not sure that we should have raises based on that, if you're doing a good job, which is your job anyway, so.
I just, I, I actually understand that point, Mr. Chairman, I guess it is a lot of work for the employee and the administrator to coordinate the evaluations, to do the evaluations, and I really, the reason why I think this, uh, I don't even know what to call it, this structure, the raise structure scale needs to be created, is cause I just think that if we're gonna go through the motions of doing this time-intensive exercise, which I think is important, we need to know if our employees are, um, meeting expectations, exceeding expectations, we wanna reward the people that are doing a really good job, I just wanna make sure that there's a purpose for doing it, and I think that if we don't have a scale, and everything is still subjective, then, uh, we know if people are doing a good job or bad job, why are we doing the evaluations, I guess, would be my question.
Okay, so I can give you the other half, because, uh, Mr. Pacheco and I actually worked for the same employer, who had two different processes, but this would also tie in with using the evaluation scores, at the university, no one got raises, okay? What happened was, we had to go through the evaluation process, and based on that written eval, they didn't use scores, but it was all written evaluation, the, the, uh, employee self-evaluation meets with the immediate supervisor, uh, and maybe department head, department head sends it to administration and finance, it ends up in the president's office, the increases were considered merit, and they were based on the evaluation, so if you don't call them raises, but you base them on a score, or in our case, a written evaluation, everything was based on merit, and yes, performance was involved, and not everyone got the same old thing, so it's, it's, again, this is the same employer, but it was kind of interpreted.
Different agencies.
Yeah, exactly.
It helps you stay consistent, I mean, we met last week, and there were some conversations had about pay raises, and they were not at three and a half percent. That gets you into a fairly significant trap, and a problem, and legal liability.
And if someone has the same score, is that the point you're making, if someone else had the same score, and we don't give someone the same raise?
Right now, if you're going through this, if you're going through this budget by budget, and you say, well, I say, I don't think that's appropriate, I think it should be a two percent, or yeah, I think three and a half percent's okay, you need to have a reason why you are picking and choosing. What's a, a, an evaluation process is a great reason, it shows process, we have a policy for it, we have an established form, the employee sits down, we get to talk about it.
Standardized, too, everyone does it.
It's standardized, and so if you have something comparative to that, you are quote-unquote safer, when you're evaluating many different people with various skills at very different jobs.
The only other problem that we have, when we were talking salaries, I'll just say generic salaries across the board, there are individuals who are elected officials who never get evaluated, but some of the increases they're seeking are higher, and.
Fair, they're elected, you're right.
So, all I'm saying is, in the budget process, we gotta look at all of what, across the board, what we consider to be a fair method, and then look at, even though they're not officially evaluated per se, um, how they do their jobs, respond to the public, cause they're elected officials, whatever, but we gotta come up with a way to try to make it even a fair, fair's a better word.
I'm gonna email you.
So, all right.
So fair could be two percent, right across the board, would be something that we, like, consider if that's what we've felt.
If you get a certain.
I was union, so I, I, for most of my career, so I was union, so I got raises, like, everybody got raises.
You had a contract. Oh, okay.
But, we had evaluations, and if you do your job well, which is one of the things that I did, I got promotions, so that's, that's, I understand that the commissioner's not, where else can he go, I know, I get that.
Somewhere else.
You get to be the building commissioner.
That's, that's always an option.
Two stars.
That's always an option, I don't like that comment.
Two, two things, uh, first of all, um, it's a three percent raise, the half percent is cause of the two days, so it's a three percent raise, okay, just for the record.
For the record, I thought three point, I was, I was okay, that, that didn't matter.
Second thing, though, is I've never had an evaluation, all my years on this planet, um, I didn't know how I was gonna receive this evaluation process. At first, I'll, I'll admit, I wasn't a fan, I actually thoroughly enjoyed it, and I think it's made me a better person, because from my first one to my second one, I saw what my deficiencies were, and I made improvements, now, for someone in my position, I don't have to do that, I could've kept on the same track, because my employment here was, we had a good symbiotic relationship, but I took that opportunity to self-evaluate my person and changed, now, all, I came up with this idea, just because, you know what, two percent cost of the adjustment, everybody gets it, but if it had that impact on me, then why should I be rewarded, rewarded for it, if I can say consistently high scores on my evaluation? That's just the way I looked at it, so.
I'm really glad you made that last point, because I think that was my point, was if we're gonna across the board give everyone a raise, then now we don't have an incentive for people to exceed expectations, or frankly, even meet expectations, other than, you know, you're not, you may not be employed with it.
How about the incentive being, you're gonna do your job well, I mean, that's, I do work every day, and I did my job well, and.
I agree.
But not everyone does that, I love that, I agree, I take a lot of pride, you feel the same way, I know that, cause we've talked about this, I take a lot of pride in my work personally. Not everyone thinks this way, not everyone comes to work wanting to engage in the organization and make it better when they, you know, than when they first met.
A lot of people work, cause they have to.
Right, and they look at it like, well, I'm just here until four thirty, and then I'm gon, I'm not saying this about anybody, but I'm just here till four thirty, and then I'm gonna leave, and they don't care, and they use all their time, and they just, it's a job, it is what it is, there are other people who care, they want to make it better, they are invested personally and professionally in it, and they are driving themselves to go the extra mile, it's the whole reason for the big cheese trophy, it's, it's to celebrate that, yes, care about us as an organization, we have services to provide, I want you to be nice, I want you to be friendly, and I want you to provide a quality service, because the residents deserve it.
And a raise is a.
Not everyone, not everyone thinks that way, I, I'm trying to promote that sort of mantra, I guess, and I think a lot of, a lot of the team here does believe that, um, but not everyone operates that, and this is, and this is not just Diane, like, this is, I have horror stories from my husband and his hiring fee as goes, so it's, it's a lost ethic.
I, I, I support what Selectmen Goulart is talking about, I don't have anything in mind in terms of this score equals this, okay, but here's why I do it, because I genuinely believe if, across the board, we give raises, again, there's no incentive for anybody to exceed expectations, also, that sends the message in my mind that a raise is a right, I believe that a raise is earned, so that's why I want the raises to be based on the incentives, and the incentive is having a good performance evaluation, where you not just meet expectations, but exceed expectations.
Well, the incentive should be that if they wanna do a good job, and the taxpayers will be in the salary, that, you know, that's.
But I don't believe the, a raise is a right, and I believe if you do it across the board, you're saying that, I, I, I'm not saying you are saying, I'm saying, to me, it sends a message that, eh, you're gonna get, what, eh, just.
Guaranteed.
Yeah, just, eh, get on amazon.com, who ca, you know, whatever, I'm getting my two percent next year, so, no, I'm just making a, making, being facetious.
I just wanna clarify, my reference to the university only dealt with, um, non-union personnel, and it was pretty much the president's office, because no one was in a union in, in that, um, I'll call it the executive branch, so that's why they had that process, and I think they may have used it on the campuses for, like, their, um, uh, non-union members, the chancellors, and people like that, they may, they may have had contracts, but there was also evaluations in it, um, so, I do have one question on line fifty-one, fifty-five, and we said that we don't have that anymore, but it's, what about vacation buyback, we don't do that anymore?
No, we, we roll over two weeks.
You're allowed to roll up, roll, roll over up to two weeks.
Okay.
I literally just looked at this contract, I believe that.
There's nothing in that clerical contract about.
Not about buyback, I believe it's just the police for buyback.
Okay, all right, I just, cause I just saw that, and I thought, oh.
I know, we just read it, I, I think, um.
So I think it warrants a discussion whether or not we're gonna give is, uh, increases based on an evaluation, but I'm not sure that we should automatically now, without having that discussion, and.
No, no, I agree, I agree with that.
Have we automatically give a, an increase of one percent, so I'm still, I'm gonna stick with my two percent, it's probably worked out to two and a half percent because of the extra days, I get that, um, but I think we need to come up with a, the board's come up with a policy before we start.
Well, I think when, uh, when, uh, Mrs. Aaronstein sent me that email, cause she and I have talked about this, but really haven't gotten down with nitty-gritty, but she's put something together, and, um, I was thinking of it when I was reading the evaluations myself, and I knew she had said, we need to work on it, and it's, it's the last step we're supposed to take in this formal process, going back to developing the form that we're using, and we're in the second year now, so.
This is the interpretation and beyond portion.
So, is there anything else in this budget?
No, I, I did just wanna reiterate, I know, I think you had said you didn't wanna support the three point five percent, I, I don't, I may have misunderstood, I'm sorry.
I think we need to come up, yeah, no, yeah, we need to come up with a policy, if we're going to give incentives for people having good evaluations or not, so I'm not, I'm not in favor of doing it now, and let's see what.
So are you, uh, well, so I'm saying. So are you, so I'm saying if, if there's anything else in the other, this budget we need to talk about, we should. But we can put a hold on this until I see what Mrs. Aaronstein's gonna send to me and then maybe by.
We all need to see it.
Oh, yeah, but like, we're supposed to come up with this task and then bring it to the board.
So we can do this before the next meeting.
Okay, so put a hold on this one until the next meeting. She's gonna send that to me. That was sort of our, the last leftover assignment. And come up with something to bring to the board and say, this is what we came up with.
You can also, if you are fine with the rest of this budget, just hold that one salary line and then.
Well, I hate to have Mr. Aggie have to come back for that one item though.
Well, he has to come back anyway. He's just said he's doing a contract, so.
Whether we hold that line or hold the whole thing, before things get to come back.
Let's just, overtime.
I do want to state though, however, I, I have read the performance evaluations in general and I, I can see the good work. So I feel that you will exceed what the normal expected or whatever, insert the right word, salary raises.
Okay, and so I'm gonna make a motion that we put a hold on this budget till our next meeting in anticipation of having something for the board to review relative to score, I'll call it scoring.
We have two weeks between the next meeting?
Yes.
Two, at least two? Okay, just want to make sure. I'm gonna second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Level funded.
Gas inspection, level funded.
I can probably, yes, they're all level funded.
Plumbing.
The difficult thing about those departments is that even if I have a slight reduction in permit counts, you'll see that I have some monies left in those lines at the end of the year. But that could change at any time. But I think I have a pretty good handle on the expenditures, so I'm comfortable with level funding on all those lines, even with the big projects we have going on.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve departments two forty-two, two forty-three, two forty-five and send them on to the finance committee.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you for spending your night with us.
Thank you for being patient.
Thank you. I encourage the discussion. And appreciate your support.
Always.
Okay.
Back on our regular, um, mode here?
So with the Act D on the new business, Act on the Fire Chiefs' recommendation to write off uncollected ambulance bills.
I gotta tell you, Selectman Goulart, I miss not seeing this on an agenda. It had been a while and I liked it.
Well, my other thought was when I saw it, I thought, I looked at the number and I thought, wow. But then I thought, this is leftover.
Yes, yeah, we, we didn't do the, yep, I remembered that too.
When, when, when the both chiefs, when the both new chiefs came on, we said, start from now and then we'll have to go back and look at what we haven't written on, so.
Well, it sounds like they did the research, the, the research was done.
Yeah.
And I, and I really appreciate that. I know it was not fun and I know it was not easy to do.
Well, and also during this time period, if you remember, even though we started doing things on our own, there was an understanding that the service was going to try to continue to collect.
Exactly.
But, yeah.
And they can still continue to collect, I guess.
Correct.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the request of Chief McGee and vote to write off uncollected ambulance bills totaling one hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-three cents for the period January one, two thousand seventeen to December thirty-one, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Any discussion? Now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
And I'll just state publicly that there still will be attempts to collect this money and anything that is collected will end up in the ambulance account.
I do have a question before we move on for the town administrator. Do you know if this is the, this is it?
That's.
From that period?
From ComStar.
Okay, from.
So now that we're on our own ambulance billing, internal processes, we're doing very well. And the chief and Rebecca are tracking diligently. We had a conversation when auditors were here. Basically, you know, nothing's wrong. We're not alerted to anything. But he had some comments on how to best keep track of this data and make sure that it's working.
There should be periodic reports for the town accountant too, because that was missing in the last.
That was an issue, yeah.
So again, from all reports, Rebecca has been diligently monitoring. There's a collection total for all outstanding invoices and then she updates it obviously as things come in. And the chief tells me that, and you know, he can do his own presentation. I don't mean to speak for him, but he does tell me that they're more successful.
Which is exactly what we said.
Yeah.
That was exactly why we did it.
But so far, since I've been on the board, there's been no request to waive any fees. You know, if there's some, someone who's indigent, I think, I've seen that in past meetings before I became a selectman, that the board can waive those fees if they're indigent. We don't think we can collect them, but that hasn't happened yet.
You write them off, yeah.
To get them off the books.
So we've only been doing this, what, for a year? I don't know if, is that right? It's been up and running for about a year?
It began with the, the current chief.
So I don't know if we would have anything accumulated to come before you to write off at this time. But I'm not aware of anything. Obviously, that would come here if I, if I was aware of it, you'd be aware.
And when you're having a meeting with the chief again, not a special meeting for this purpose, but just ask him, how many days are these going? Because there should be an establishment. You know how, how billing companies say thirty, sixty, ninety days?
Right.
So that they don't get too old and quite frankly, as soon as he gets the word that either the insurance, the basic insurance paid what they would or Medicaid paid, but there's no supplemental insurance, we're not gonna hang people for that. If they have no means of payment, we're not gonna hang anybody for that, you know? They have no insurance or anything. So, you know, just, just some kind of a timeline so that we, you know, they don't get out there.
Yeah, that was exactly my point. I just want to know how the chief plans to present these? Meaning, does, will he wait until there's a couple or do we do them in real time?
Well, that's why I'm saying.
Like every year, does he do it?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Thirty, sixty, ninety.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is to accept the resignation of Stephanie McGrath. We received the communication to the police chief. I want to sincerely thank you for the opportunity as a dispatcher. I have learned a lot from this process and Teresa. Unfortunately, at this time in my life, being a dispatcher isn't the right fit. I enjoyed my time in your station. I hope to see you in the future. Sincerely, Stephanie McGrath.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you're accepting motions, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the resignation of police dispatcher Stephanie McGrath with thanks and appreciation.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. The next item is accept the resignation of Chris Costa as a plumbing and gas inspector to whom I may concern effective immediately following my verbal resignation during the meeting today with the town administrator. This is dated February twentieth, February nineteenth, excuse me. And building commissioner, I offer my written resignation from the position of plumbing and gas inspectors for the town of Dayton. Along with this letter, I am returning the following items, one iPad, all associated town of Dayton approval tags. Sincerely, Christopher Costa.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the resignation of plumbing and gas inspector Chris Costa with thanks and appreciation for his years of service.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Aye, right? Where on aye?
We're on aye, yes.
Trying to keep.
Aye, okay.
No, no, I apologize.
The next agenda item is to hire a new call firefighter rank. Dear board, I am writing this letter to inform you that effective on March first, twenty twenty, I will be appointing one new member to the call firefighters' rank. The new member is Nicholas Grassy. If you should have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me. Respectfully, Christopher McGee, who is a fire chief.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we acknowledge the appointment of Nicholas Grassy to the call firefighter ranks as recommended by chief.
I'm gonna second that. Before we take a vote, is that, that is the board of health office managers Nicholas, correct?
I don't know.
It has to be, right? Right? Fabulous. Good. Welcome, welcome. I think this will be a new career, which I think is fantastic.
So you're just throwing me off? Did we vote on this already?
No, we didn't. No, I said, I was quick with it. I said, before we vote.
So we got a second already then, right?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
I wanna, I wanna, I've done this before. I want to commend Chief McGee again because one of the things he said he was going to do was increase the call ranks and he's done a remarkable job over the period of time he's been the chief to get people to come back or volunteer again.
I think people gravitate towards good leadership. So he has been a man of his word and he's been a good chief and we really appreciate it. Chief McGee, if you're watching.
So the, we already discussed Jay, but I did fail to mention your email that we received. I'm sorry, we threw everything off and pulled that paperwork out of there, but anyway, it was an email from you. So Kay, review and approve clerical union education incentive for Jonathan Gray. February twelfth, twenty twenty, the zoning board of appeals voted unanimously to approve the expenditure of the master's degree education incentive outlining the clerical union contract for the office manager Jonathan Gray pending approval of the board of selectmen. And this is dated February eighteenth.
Before I make that motion, I was just chuckling to myself because I think I misread the agenda item and I misread it as he was doing the tuition reimbursement. I don't know why and then I thought back.
I read the same thing.
Yeah, I thought back. I'm like, he already has his master's. What is he, is he getting a PhD?
My other thought was there's a cla- there's a class specific to zoning that he wants to take. But I was under the same.
Okay, I wasn't the only one.
Am I the only one that realized it was the approval of a clerical union education incentive?
I think it was.
Is it twelve hundred and fifty dollars?
Twelve hundred flat, but you have to determine if his degree, I'm sorry, I'm blinking because of the contract language. You have to determine if the degree fits with the job of a zoning board.
Oh, okay.
So what is the master's degree?
Sustainability.
Sustainability, yeah. I think it, I think it goes.
I think the easiest way to determine, I think I'm leaning that way, ask them for a transcript.
Yeah.
Because my guess is, like, we've all suffered through. There are required courses and there are electives. And there may be both some required and electives that would be relevant into running an office and zoning. And there might be others we say, well, who cares about that? But if they were part of the course of study that was required, and so I think that would be, in cases of a question, we can point to and say, exactly, this is what we're looking at.
I think that's a good point.
Okay, we will do that.
So I'll entertain a motion then to continue this with the request that we get additional information on his degree.
I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to obtain additional information pursuant to Mr. Gray's coursework for his master's degree and take this under advisement until we receive such information and can reconsider.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Let's get back to the budget if that's what we want to do. It's not a request to continue this the next meeting, okay?
Um, actually, I'm happy to make a request, but I don't think anyone's gonna want to go along with it. I'm happy to not do the rest of the budget tonight, but if we do, I would like, if we could have, if we could continue this next meeting. I don't know what, I mean, next week. I don't know what is planned for the official meeting in March, the first one or the second Wednesday. But I'm happy if we need to continue this next week.
Well, the only thing I'm looking at is the fourth of March is the seven PM DR advisory committee meeting that we wanted to go to, that we talked about. So if we could pick another night.
I'm okay with doing a non.
Not the fifth, that's, that's the budget workshop.
Yeah, and I can't, I can't do the third. So it would have to be like Monday or Thursday.
We can't post for Monday.
Okay, so it would have to be Thursday.
Well, that's a budget workshop meeting, the six thirty one. That's DI.
We'll have, we'll have to, we'll just continue it, I guess, next.
So my thought is you can start your meeting early. Do the budgets and then do, like, split your meeting up. Do budgets and then the rest of your.
Are you gonna be able to?
I will, I will be able to.
What is the earliest that we can do? What, you know what? Instead of that question, what time works?
Um, you know, I think the earliest would, uh, we would do this before our regularly scheduled March meeting, our first one.
The March eleventh meeting.
Okay. Uh, I think the earliest would be like five.
Oh, wow, okay.
And I would work from home, so. Yeah, six, six would be better if we could, but five, five thirty.
Are we gonna have additional budget items?
I have a slew of budgets parked, I guess, for the three eleven meeting. So that would be up to you if you want me to move things around. I also have on my calendar, the last meeting in March right now is reserved for all the budgets that you've held throughout the process and then maybe like one ninety-two that I've talked a lot about. So you could also just do those during a meeting in April after you've met with the finance committee because sometimes you change based upon their thoughts. So you can, we can work on the budget schedule and extend it a little bit. You don't have to decide everything in three, three meetings. I mean.
I know, I like to look at the budget and have a recommendation for the finance committee. Then we review it when it comes back from them because they may have made some arguments that we haven't thought of, so.
That's been our process too, so.
Would anyone be interested in having just a budget meeting? That's the only agenda item on Tuesday, the tenth of March. And we hit all the budget stuff we can think of.
I have no issue with.
Nothing else. We're only gonna talk about getting through the budget.
Selectman Goulart, I think that is a good idea. I do want to hear from our administrative team, but I have nothing planned for that day. It is Holi. I will fit this in.
It is what?
Holi.
I didn't get that either.
I don't get it. What's that mean?
H O L I? It's a, it's a festival in India.
Oh, I feel.
It's also Purim if you celebrate Purim. Hey, it's daylight savings time begins to that sign.
I think I actually have.
That's the regular DI school committee meeting, but there are two DI meetings scheduled, the fourth and the fifth. And I think from that advisory committee being, I don't see us going to the school committee meeting the next week.
But aren't they going to discuss the budget?
Well, I got all these budget meetings down here in there.
Right, so they, they said that they're gonna, they're gonna finalize it on the twenty-fourth, I thought they said, which is two weeks after.
So if we met early on the eleventh? What if we met early on the eleventh and then had another meeting in between your next March meeting? Right now, we're only scheduled for two, so the ones that I've kicked for the eleventh can just be pushed back one week, no big deal.
Honestly, I think the compromise solution to not have to have a random meeting on a random day is I'm willing to work from home that day and then we can have a five PM if that doesn't put anyone else. Give us two hours extra. Maybe that will help. I don't know. Can never be too sure.
For cool.
Would that be better?
I don't think I can make the ten.
Is five PM too early?
We're talking about the eleventh, yeah. Yeah, no, no.
Is that on the eleventh?
You're talking about the eleventh, five o'clock. We have a regular meeting at seven PM.
I just wanted to start two hours early.
Budgets would be taking place all before.
The two hours prior.
Seven o'clock.
And then regular business, seven?
Yeah.
Okay. Personally, I have no issue with that. I think that that sounds fine.
I'm okay with it.
So on the eleventh, five PM?
Yeah.
Would you like us to post this separately in the event that you don't take two hours for the budget?
Could you put it, I'm sorry, that's a chairman question.
Can you?
Well, I want the opinion of the board.
Or we put every budget.
Can you post a budget workshop meeting at five o'clock?
I like the workshop.
And post the annual, the regular meeting at seven? That way, if we're done, we have a break. If not, we have to go straight through.
I like the word workshop. Everyone is using that and, and I finally understand. It's because that's all that we're talking about and we're really working through it.
Oh, I hate it.
I know. Well, the term, but I think we need to do this and I think rather than have a separate meeting, because it can be tough coordinating schedules and family and, you know.
It's also helpful for any department head that might want to attend because generally, most of them are here at that time, anyway.
So I'll entertain a motion that we have a budget workshop meeting on three eleven at five PM, including the budget items that we're not going to discuss tonight, as well as additional budget items.
Mr. Chairman, actually, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
I like when you tee it up like that.
And it was agreed that you're gonna have two separate meetings posted.
Yep.
Selectmen's reports, MMA report by selectwoman Goulart.
Oh, okay.
Hi, what's wrong?
Hi, what's wrong?
If it's any consolation, Cable, it would be easier for us to have that budget workshop. If you want to record it on that Wednesday.
The eleventh?
Yes.
Is five P M too early?
I can get your-
Okay, are you sure? We're not putting you out?
Thank you very much.
We just had a motion to have the meeting at five o'clock on May, March eleventh. So that works good.
Thank you.
Actually, we should have consulted, we should have consulted with you, I'm sorry.
There's no communicating.
We need like a buzzer.
Yeah.
Selectmen's report.
Yeah. I'm just going to, I will, I've got this printed, but I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll give you copies. So the MMA meeting first, the meeting we had this past month, which was our first meeting of the year, because we start out after the annual meeting and trade show. Mr. Reed, the town administrator from Easton, made a online presentation, and the topic was PFAs. These are these, I'll call them practically indestructible chemicals that are in everything, including our bodies, that the D E P is in the process of writing regulations to determine pots per million, excuse me, pots per billion. They'll also look into pots per trillion. When I hear these things, I think, oh, how bad are these things? They're everywhere. They're in people. These are chemicals that about the only way you can destroy them is to incinerate them. Filtering doesn't get rid of them. Distilling doesn't get rid of them. They actually tested some water from a very well-known bottling company of water. And I think it was twenty pots per trillion, and they're thinking that might be the target. There were questions about private wells and wells that communities have. And Mr. Reed talked about Easton and what they've done and testing that's been done. And I think there's one well they're not using because there's questions about it. But even a private well out somewhere in Dayton, if you could find a lab that could test it to twenty pots per trillion, because that's another thing, not all labs have capability of testing to that level. So for right now, D E P's working on regs. We're waiting to find out what EPA is going to do. This is not a crisis thing. It's everywhere. And initially, they said it was related to a military basis and firefighting activities, but they since found out it's in water repellent and stain prevention and Teflon coated whatever. So anyhow, that was the presentation for Mr. Reed. We're also going to establish some subcommittees of our committee so that we can specifically work on certain items and then bring them back to our full committee, such as solid waste, energy issues, and I'm hoping we can get something on that tax situation with pilot farms going, and stormwater. So that's basically all the stuff we covered. It was, the meeting was full, the whole two hours. So I have something written up, I will, and I'll give that to you, just so you see a little detail, but-
And be part of the public record.
Yeah, I'll give it to Karen, too.
Thank you. No correspondence, acknowledgement, this is good news. I received the communication from the director of WAGS, Sue Fattato. And she has a good report for us. The third grade classes at Dayton Elementary School have been learning about compassion. I have asked by Elena St. Germain, Dayton resident and D E S staff, to come in and do a presentation for third grade classes, which I did on January thirtieth. I provided a short PowerPoint of photos that showed the animals we had helped and how we helped them. It was a huge hit, and the students were incredibly enthusiastic and engaged. They offered stories of their own rescue animals and asked great questions. Each class then had a container to donate coins to WAGS. There was a competition between the fifth, the five third grade classes, and the class who raised the most money would get extra recess and paw pencils. The students were very eager to participate, bringing in their piggy banks and seeking change from families' couch cushions in the car. On February fourteenth, two thousand twenty, the coins were counted at the mechanic's bank, who agreed to waive the coin counting fee, more community support there, and donated a total of one thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars. Absolutely incredible. We know that these wonderful students receive support from their families, and in turn, WAGS benefited from all the support, for which we were very grateful. One parent mentioned that next year, we should have grades at our schools compete against each other, so maybe there will be a growing, this will be a growing annual event. We are finalizing a number of rescues currently, and once that is done, I will be thrilled to show these students and their families just what a difference their contributions have made. Just because we had an abandoned mom of pups on the side of the road vetted, another pup hit by a car and left on the side of the road, also vetted, a mom with nine pups vetted, a two-year-old German Shepherd saved from euthanasia, and every penny helped that happen. Thank you for anything you can do to shout out all this incredible support at the next possible board of selectmen's meeting. So this is very good news. This just shows the compassion of the students at schools and Dayton residents, how they are concerned about rescue animals and how we advocate for that. So I'm glad that Sue Fattato will be able to bring this to my attention, so that we could do a little shout out to them.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a request? If the board is willing, I'd love if we could give WAGS like a certificate of appreciation, some sort of token of our acknowledgement of what they're doing in town, not just being an important nonprofit, but really going out there, getting into classrooms, educating people. I mean, I just think it's fantastic. So I would love if the board would agree to possibly send them a certificate of appreciation to the nonprofit.
I support it.
Yeah, yeah. Appreciation and recognition for ongoing, you know.
You want to put that in the form of a motion then? You want a second that?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we- Grant, issue, thank you. I could not think of the word. Issue a certificate of appreciation and recognition to WAGS for their ongoing community efforts to engage and educate residents of Dayton on the importance of animal rescue and animal rights.
I think you just wrote the certificate.
Perfect. Quote me.
Probably all those elementary students are sleeping now, so unfortunately, they didn't get to see this. Some may be watching. Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? The ayes have it. And thank you again, WAGS, for all the great work that you do for the town.
Thanks for letting us know, by the way. We are not always, we don't always know every single thing that goes on in the community. So if something fabulous is happening and you are aware of it, please do not assume the board of selectmen is aware of it. Send us an email, and we'll be happy to acknowledge it.
This reminds me of something that happened at the D R meeting last night. One of the things on the agenda was whether or not they should have a P R person or a P R firm. And when you see something like this, and as you said, do people know about this, even the children? So along that lines, this is something that a P R firm could do. So I passed a note to the chairman and told her that Dayton had hired somebody and suggested she contact you.
They did, and I gave them the contact information this morning.
Okay, because there was, I didn't, I didn't get the impression when the discussion was taking place that people realized what, I'll just say what our service is. And they talked about a position, and there was somebody from the department that would have to approve the position. And I'm thinking, this is getting so complicated.
They were talking about a full-time position, a part-time position, so really-
Oh, my goodness.
And the value of even doing it. And when I see something like this and listen to the comments, that's a great article.
It is, and the likelihood of that ending up- Right, but the likelihood of that ending up in the paper and then distributed to people so that they know what happened is love. So I love that we have this service, because it allows us to share all the positives and not just-
Yeah, and they pointed out, Attleboro and Totten have one reporter each to cover all of their communities, so it doesn't happen.
You know what? I'm so glad you said that, because I was in Boston the other day, and I actually saw Jordan DeShanes, who used to be the reporter for the Gazette. And so he used to be really nice, you could say, hey, Jordan, we had the, I don't know, Easter egg hunt. Can you do an article? He would do an article. And I just, we don't have that anymore, because he's obviously not there. He was let go. I think they downsized. So I think we should rely more and more on our internal P R firm, our relationship with Gilfoyle, for getting these good things out. Oftentimes, news only publishes bad stuff, right? So, you know, people aren't going to hear this unless we get it out there, so.
And the other thing is, the letter I wrote about Mike Gay, if you get Mike Gay to cover something, he'll do the photography and get a little bit of reporting, but-
It may not be anything to write, anyone to write anything, but the pictures will be there.
But the pictures still assure.
Correct.
But other than that, you're right.
Mm-hmm, it's true.
This next thing, you don't have anything in your packet. Well, that says there's nothing to provide. So I asked for this to be placed here, because with the animal control vehicle, with Detective Richards getting the vehicle for us, Mannheim ended up donating to us. They picked up the remaining cost of the vehicle, and they, it was a sum of twenty-five hundred dollars. So I just wanted to acknowledge them and thank them. They're a continual partner to the town. They've done this before and, you know, helped in a myriad of other ways, too. So thank you to them.
Absolutely, and thank you, and we have not said this publicly, but thank you to G. Lopes and every other resident or business or entity that donated supplies, time, anything for the animal shelter. The new animal shelter is greatly appreciated. I forgot, I was not here last week, so I could not do it. But thank you so much. We appreciate it very much.
It might be, it might be along those lines, if we could have something framed at the animal shelter thanking publicly, you know, the following-
Made this possible.
Yes, yes, just-
I would love that, and we can get a list from the animal control officer.
Right, just so that people will see. And not only that, people see it, and they might be encouraged to do something.
As long as we're not taking down pictures of the animals that are there.
No. Compliments.
No, just be something of recognition of, but, you know, the town of Dayton recognizes. I think that's great.
Minutes, except for review the minutes for the regular board of selectmen's meeting on February nineteenth, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? The ayes have it. Approval of the minutes for the regular board of selectmen's meeting on February twelfth, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Was that, did we make that correction then on seventeen fifty for next door versus seventeen? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? The ayes have it. Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I moved that the following warrants dated February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty be approved. Thirty-five A dash twenty in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars, fifty-five cents, and thirty-five B dash twenty in the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars, sixty-one cents, both being payroll, and thirty-five C dash twenty in the amount of ninety-three thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars, ten cents. Accounts payable be approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? The ayes have it.
I was just going to suggest that you skip this, because you're going to discuss, what's the word? Like the spectra? I don't know what to call it, the scale?
Oh, 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 yes, yes, yes.
Performance evaluation scale?
Oh, I see, I see, I see, yeah.
So I don't know if you want to delay this until, I mean, of course, there's other things in the contract for you to discuss.
I, that's why I was-
I don't know if you wanted to delay it.
I'm happy however you, I'm going to, I'm okay with whatever, however you want to do it. We can discuss everything, but that's fine, the incentive, whatever you want to call it.
I'd just assume that we do, we do our work and get something to them to look at, and then I think it'll be easy going through these things.
Do it all together?
I think so.
I have no opinion. I think that's fine.
I don't think there's any major terms in the contracts, because these are kind of like, they've already been gone through once, and these are like renewals, but a salary's a big issue, so. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we dispense with an executive session tonight, and that we schedule it at a future meeting. Contingent on the data that Mrs. Ehrenstein and I will put together and get to you ahead of time relative to the point system in our evaluation process.
I'm going to second, second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? Abstention? The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? The ayes have it. Thank you, Cable.
Thank you, Cable.
Bye, Cable.